Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I call the workshops of the School Board of Palm Beach County order at 2:30 PM. Mrs. Bass, please call the rule.
District One Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District Two Alexandria Ayala.
Here.
District Three Karen Brill.
Here.
District Four Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District Five Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District Six Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District Seven Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We have four of them. All seven board members are present. Also joining us is Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Carol Bass. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at palmbeachschools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900 or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124, pound sign. This meeting is being transcribed by a closed captioner, so remember to speak at a reasonable pace. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to be led by Superintendent Burke?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome any public speakers who are joining us in person today. While your attendance here at the board meeting is appreciated, please be mindful of important safety protocols that the board now has in place to conform with COVID-19 safety guidelines and school board policies, as well as security protocols adopted and will be enforced by school police. In an effort to keep all participants and district employees safe, everyone must obey all lawful orders issued by school police, which may include remaining or moving to a specific area or location, lowering voices for safety reasons, or other safety-related commands. Please maintain social distancing at all times, remain in the designated areas, and leave the property once your visit is complete. Public comments must relate to the subject matter of the agenda item for which the speaker had requested to address. The School District of Palm Beach County supports the peaceful assembly of persons to express themselves regarding matters concerning district students, employees, and the community. However, if such peaceful assembly results in a disturbance, those persons may be subject to arrest or other lawful action, so please be respectful of all persons who are present on school district property. The public speakers must be orderly, behave with civility, and refrain from obscene or vulgar conduct, use of pervanity, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or statements that tend to incite violence or breach of the peace. In addition, no person attending this meeting is to harass any other person in the room. Further, loud or prolonged applause, cheering, heckling, or jeering is disruptive to the meeting and for those attempting to speak. Failure to abide by these standards is considered interfering with the expeditious orderly process of the board meeting and will be considered grounds for removal from the meeting by school police. Please understand that school police have had the seating arranged based on security protocols developed by school police. Once you are seated, you are required, again based on school police security protocols, to remain seated unless you are going to the podium, to the restroom, or to leave the meeting. If you move your chairs or get out of your seats, school police will enforce those security protocols, and they do have the authority to have you removed from the meeting if those security protocols are breached. While you're in this room, you must wear your mask. It must cover your nose and mouth at all times, even when you are speaking at the podium. Please respect these cautionary warnings that in the event of interference with the orderly processes of the meeting, failure to follow the safety protocols and procedures as I have outlined, or otherwise disruptive conduct, it will result in the removal of the person or persons from the meeting or other action. We will maintain decorum, civility, and the orderly conduct of school board business. Thank you. Before I turn the workshops over to Superintendent Burke, we will hear from our speakers. As I call your name, please come to the microphone. Please understand you will have only three minutes to speak to us when you get to the microphone, and the microphone will be turned off as the three minutes expires. I'll call you three at a time. Angelique Contreras, Jennifer Showalter, Bailey Lachels. All right, I don't see anybody coming to the microphone in the other room. Did I call your name?
I'm the third person on that list.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am. In any order that you come up, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Bailey Lachels.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about the code of conduct.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm here to speak about the student code of conduct in elementary schools.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here to allow my daughter, who's seven years old, to speak to you regarding the student code of conduct in her own words, as she is experiencing the harsh reality of the code of conduct and the disciplinary actions she is being faced with firsthand. I just ask that you be respectful of the fact that she is seven years old and never spoken publicly, and to please give her any... If she goes over by a few seconds, please be a little gracious and give her time. She is seven. Thank you.
They'll pull the microphone down for her. Can you pull that microphone down for her, please?
Hello, I am Fiona. I am in second grade at Discovery Key Elementary School, and I am getting punished because of the school rules, and I don't think that is fair. I was not wearing a mask all year, but the office... Yesterday, I got punished about not wearing a mask. I had to go in the office for lunch. When the principal came and got me from class, when I got home, I started a book about the discipline I got at school, because I have never been in trouble before and always followed the rules. When I am at school, the teachers tell my mom what a good student I am, and the principal keeps asking mommy to put me in the accelerated class, because I am really smart. That's why I am here to talk to you today. They keep changing the world still yesterday, 8/31/2021. I had to eat in the office, and then a teacher said, "Hi Fiona," to me, so I said back, "Hi, how was your day?" She replied, "Good," and asked me the same question, and I said, "Good," back. Then Ms... Then Ms. Black yelled, "No talking," from her office, and then I cried, but I am standing up for what I believe in. Then I... Then today, I had to go to the office to... And I had to stay all the way to lunchtime. After lunch, my mom picked me up to come here, but before that, I heard my principal say to the assistant principal that I am going to have to stay in the office tomorrow until I put a mask on or for the whole entire day. And that is why I am writing a book about this. I also made a poster. I told my principal that it's my birthday in 23 days, and then she said back to me, "I will probably be saying happy birthday to you in 25 days." So I guess that means I'm probably going to be suspended, then I'm being punished for not wearing a mask, and I have to write not to wear one. And my teachers teach me that people can't touch me, my body, and force me to do stuff on it or do things I don't want to. So I don't get why I'm getting in trouble for believing that it's... If it's my body, then it's my choice. I like rules because they help everybody be good in school and make it easier for us to be able to learn. They are good. They are good so kids can behave for the teachers, and I can learn more about when I get punished because I'm not wearing a mask. It's not fair. It's my body, and I am... My teacher teaches me like my mom does, that I get to make my own choices, because it's my body, and I get to choose what I do with it and what I put on it. Please stop making me get disciplined for not wearing a mask. It's not fair, and it's illegal. And in closing, I hope everyone doing this to me goes to jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. Tiffany Young, Everett Cooper, Charmaine Postal.
Good afternoon, everyone. Charmaine Postal, Board Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Burke, and everyone in your respective places. So I'm speaking on two areas of this meeting this afternoon. One area is the legislative platform. On behalf of the... And I'm speaking with two hats. So with one hat, on behalf of the District Diversity and Equity Committee, we speak with respect to the legislative platform. So we had a wonderful presentation by Mr. Keith Oswald and as well as Dr. Adam Miller regarding the concordant scores. And as the committee, we urge this board to really take a look at those concordant scores, but not only look at those concordant scores, make it a priority to add the advocacy part, to advocate delaying those proposed concordant scores. Make it a priority to put that on the legislative platform, if it's not already. I know staff... It will be coming to staff, and you've probably heard it before, but on behalf of the DDEC Committee, we would also like this to not only be on the legislative platform, but something we want is to educate the parents on the impact of our FY22 graduates, because in this room, we're talking to the choir. In the DDEC Committee, we're speaking to the choir, but how are we giving our parents this information? And this is nothing new to probably the people that's in this room, but to our parents, this is very much so new. To the agencies that support our... That provide resources to our students, this is something that is very much so new. So I'm just speaking on behalf of DDEC to really take a look at that and ensure that that is on our advocacy platform, a priority on our advocacy platform. And then as a parent, just to throw my hat on there, recently at Boca Raton High School, the football team, which consists of over 100 students recently, all had to... One player tested positive. All 100 kids were quarantined for six days. 100 kids tested positive. I'm sorry, 100 kids, 100 students have been sent home to quarantine for six days unless they are vaccinated. Fortunately, they can submit work, but they're self-teaching. As of today, Palm Beach County has how many students in quarantine due to COVID? We are still in the middle of a pandemic, and we should not reasonably expect to increase academic standards while students are quarantining and self-teaching. And I know I'm not... I'm speaking to the wrong people, but that's the importance of putting this on our legislative platform. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The gentleman in the other room, go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Everett Cooper. I'm speaking on the various COVID-based policies you guys intend to make changes on today. Last time I spoke, I spoke about facts that we have a freedom crisis. Here I am again, standing for freedom that DeSantis intends to protect and the school board intends to infringe. You have failed to even discuss if what you intend to do is even morally right. You assume it is, but there is no diversity of thought amongst you to challenge the lies you all believe. Our founding fathers would be ashamed. You assume that you have an obligation to keep everyone safe at all costs. This sounds like Australia, who has let infants die due to travel restrictions limiting their access to life-saving medical treatments. Australia has also taken to shooting rescue dogs to keep those willing to adopt these pups at home and away from shelter volunteers. At what cost are you willing to go to force what you believe is good for the collective on every single individual? Comrades, I urge you to move away from your tyrannical dictates, run away from your totalitarian desires. You cannot control free will, but today, you use the guise of a special meeting to push through policy changes that vastly enhance totalitarian-style power into the superintendent. Teachers and staff, pay attention to the erosions of your God-given liberties that this board intends to infringe on. Today, the board intends to discuss changes to Policy 3.82, Employee Protocols to COVID-19. These changes remove the 90 days expiration that requires the board to revisit the policy and places all powers a modified percent and now reinstates at will and even in defiance of state-level directives. Teachers, principals, staff, it is time to stand up against tyranny. There may be a price to pay, but your liberties are worth standing up for. In addition to staff policy changes, there is new... There is an entirely new paragraph outlining the superintendent's new authority, which at some point will likely be made indefinite, just like the staff policy. Also, the proposed language is terrifying. Applicable government, guidance, and orders. Does this mean you give the power to the superintendent to determine if a government guidance or order is applicable and whether or not to follow it? No wonder he wants guns, money, and lawyers sent in his defense. What is tyranny? Tyranny is infringing on my rights, which you have done. Tyranny is using propaganda to justify unjust actions, which you have done. Tyranny is silencing and removing dissent, which you did when you had me arrested last week. Tyranny is making decisions for others that they have the right to make for themselves. Tyranny is using the systems to introduce propaganda to youth without parents' knowledge and that go against the principles as to which the kids are being raised, which I gave you evidence of. I call for teachers, students, and parents to stand up to tyranny, stand up for liberty, and stand up for our God-given rights. Thank you.
Sheila Newton, Mary Frye.
Hello, my name is Sheila Newton, and I have a son in Park Vista High School and a daughter that I homeschool, because I can't send her to school because of all your policies. And I'm just... I'm going to make this quick. I just want you guys to know that you're elected officials, and your job is to protect our children and their education, not to make medical decisions, and that's up to the parents. We, the parents, make medical decisions on our children. And I can tell you about so many studies that I read, including Stanford study, which shows how bad the masks are. The masks are more bad than good, and it doesn't matter, because you're going to make your own decision. But I just want to let you know as a parent, I'm not okay with this, and I feel like next there's going to be vaccine mandates, and I'm not okay with that either. And even if it means pulling your children out of school, that's what we'll do. But I want you guys to do your own study and to also think of your parents, and how would you like if someone took all your rights away and made decisions on your kids, on their medical... I understand, educational, but not medical. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Angelique Contreras, Jennifer Showalter, Mary Frye.
Hi, my name is Mary Frye. I'm a mother whose child was in the Palm Beach school system. I am speaking through my observations that the county is grossly abusing power, and they're stealing and have stolen from taxpaying citizens and now our children. As a multi-ethnic, single mother, perplexed me why are so many children eating breakfast and lunch in school what was so different about me that I could budget a minuscule paycheck and provide for my child? I realized it was my parents. My mother escaped communism. My father was an immigrant. They instilled pride and common sense in me. When you rely on someone or something for your basic needs, you are now in their control. The school boards and unions are totally invested in that. It is hypocritical and disrespectful when you say you are concerned and care about children, so mask them up. In this building, with all the training workshops, why are there so many children that are below average in reading, writing, math, science? And science would point to masks do not work. And history? With all the resources, why are children in America failing and so many turn to drugs? Shouldn't that be an issue that we should be more concerned about? Don't put the blame entirely on the parents and families that are working while the school system is indoctrinating their children. You people that chose the education vocation have no right to complain how hard your jobs are. The hard-working moms and dads have been supportive and compassionate, but it has gotten to the point where we see this is a one-way relationship. This is abuse and needs to stop. Historically, in the end, fascism, socialism, communism does not work for the people. As you are riding the power train at this time, you must realize at some point you too will be kicked off. Out of concern and respect for those with a weak or compromised immune system, I encourage them to do what they must to stay healthy. Mask up if you feel safe. I grew up in the Northeast and have had several bacterial infections from having my face covered with a scarf or anything that resembles a mask, so masks are harmful. The climate here is hot and humid and being forced for hours. It is completely inhumane. A cloth covering or any type of mask is going to harm healthy children. Thank you to all the caring teachers and administrators that are in agreement, but unfortunately are being bullied into staying quiet. We, the minority class, have been used politically. We are being bullied now, and we are opening our eyes to what this board is trying to get away with. It's horrible, and it's not helping.
Thank you, ma'am. Angelique Contreras, Jennifer Showalter, Tiffany Young.
Hi, I'm Jen Showalter, here on several policies, including 2.065 and 5.326. But all of these policies boil down to one reason why I'm here. I'm here again because you refuse to listen to the parents, parents like me. The board is refusing to pay attention to what we say, because it doesn't reflect what you want to hear. We, the parents, want to be heard. We, the parents. That's why I'm running for school board. I am a mom first. My two special-needs sons' medical exemptions were denied last year. The doctors had provided a choice, which the school district took away, making it virtually impossible for any student, like my sons', to obtain accepted exemption. The same thing is happening again. This is not a workable system, and I'm one of many here calling for massive reforms. So I'm standing up here not only for my three children, but two of which are special needs, but for every child in the system, for every child in the future. They have a right to choose what is best for themselves by law. Your policies not only strip away that ability, but it insinuates that parents don't love their children enough to do what's best for them. Their parents know them best and have that right. If you want to wear a mask, you should have that option. If you don't want to wear a mask, you should have that option. Yet the board punishes, harasses, and intimidates, not only for masks but vaccine status as well. You're forgetting that there are other laws, not just the ones in the lawsuit against DeSantis. We can set those aside. There's the Department of Health under Notice of Emergency Rule 64 DER 21-12, which states in Section 1, "Schools should encourage routine cleaning. Students should be encouraged to practice routine handwashing. Students should stay home if they're sick. Students may wear masks, but schools must allow for parent or legal guardian to opt out." Section 6 of the DOH states, "Those students shall not be subject to harassment or discriminatory treatment, including but not limited to relegation to certain physical locations, isolation during school activities, exclusion from any school-sponsored events or activities." There's more, but the bottom line is, the Health Department order contains language that prohibits harassment and demands parent options. You're not only violating that, but civil rights laws, like the Civil Rights Act of '64, Rehabilitation Act of '73, Civil Rights Act of '91, Section 2302B, Title V of the United States Code, as well as OSHA and ADA compliance violations. The school board is supposed to be a conduit for the will of the people, so I'm running to be that communication and accountability conduit, to stand for every child and every employee, whether they agree with me or not. Thank you.
Angelique Contreras, Tiffany Young. All right, would IT please start the eight recorded messages?
Good morning, school board. This is Jason Bolt, Lieutenant Colonel, United States Air Force, retired and an anesthesia provider. I'm experienced with COVID. I know that masks do not prevent aerosolized particles from prevention or reception and transmission between people. It is a proven fact. The particle size is so small, it filters through anything you put across your face other than N95, period. You all know this, and yet you mandate facial coverings, which are ineffective and actually impair breathing in our children. Now, the pediatricians in this county and other medical providers are being medical tyrants by announcing on their websites they will not allow for 504 exemptions for their children. When you stated publicly, when you instituted your illegal mandate policy, that children with medical issues could apply for 504 guidance. Conversely, you now see all the pediatricians in the area, the ones I had looked at on websites, now saying, "Do not ask us for this guidance." Medical tyranny and blatant disrespect for the law, as governed by the Executive Order 2175. But you know this already, and you stated publicly that you have a position that masking is your requirement, regardless of the science. It is a shame that you would put children and remove parental rights on a whim. In the coming days, the parents are going to speak out against you. We've been doing it to your face at the board, but now the lawyers and the judges will make these decisions, which is a shame, since it already should have never come to this. We've never had to give up our parental rights. Lastly, I did a tour of our ICU. Eleven pediatric ICU patients, seven of them with COVID. Only one was intubated. Seven of those, 11 with COVID. Seven of those 11 with COVID are over 80 kilos. They're pre-teens, that means they're 150 pounds. They're overweight. They came late and also are more severe if they vape or smoke. You need to talk about obesity. And these are the concerns that should be for the medical community, not masking healthy children with ineffective facial coverings.
Hi, my name is Brittany Jackson. I'm calling on the mask mandate. Please reconsider the parents' opt-out option. My daughter doesn't want to wear a mask, but she is too scared not to wear a mask. She's too scared she's going to get yelled at by her teachers or her fellow students, which has happened in the past multiple times. She's not scared of a virus. That, I don't know if you've checked out the statistics, but it does not affect children. Also, it is normal in the beginning of the school year for kids to get sick. And I'm just very sad that this is what we're having to do. If the mask mandate isn't an option for the parent opt-out is not being turned, my child will be out of your school system as soon as possible. I am already looking at this time. But I will still keep fighting for the kids at these schools that don't have an option to come out. And I'll do what I can. And I just want you to know that this is not right to mask up kids and to know that you are making up your own rules as you go. I think if it was the other way around and someone was making up rules that you had to follow, I don't think you would appreciate that either. I've never seen a school board meeting until the other Wednesday and I was just so disgusted on how the school board members talk to the parents. It makes me so sick and I hate that I was so blind to how things were going. So please reconsider this or else you will be losing a lot of touring. So I thank you for your time and I thank you for reconsidering this. Have a great day.
Hi, this is Allison Negri. I am the parent of a kindergartner. My daughter has had multiple surgeries, one for a ruptured eardrum, one for a turbinate bone removal. And for those of you who don't know what that is, it's because she couldn't breathe. She actually had to have bone removed in her nose because she couldn't breathe. So her ENT told me how to get the letter from her primary care. All the primary cares have blanket statements that nobody will write a letter because they're all afraid of being sued. So my daughter now cannot breathe. I was able to get a letter from a doctor of chiropractic, doctor of chiropractic, yet you won't accept it because it doesn't fit your agenda. So the only way for my daughter to be able to breathe safely in school is for an opt-out. It is a medical exemption that you guys are ignoring. So I don't know why you won't allow my child to breathe safely, but it is beyond frustrating. So I will continue to push and I will continue to find a way to get my child to breathe while she is in school for eight hours a day, instead of sucking in a cloth mask that is preventing her from being able to breathe. Again, legitimate surgery for not being able to breathe and you guys are prohibiting it. So I hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, this is Robert Rossetto and I'm calling to discuss the school board's mask mandates. I'm a father of a 10-year-old here in Boca Raton, attending a Palm Beach County public school. He's extremely unhappy about being required to wear a mask at school for seven-plus hours a day. He complains the mask makes him feel sick and restricts his breathing. He has gone to the nurse's office lightheaded and feeling nauseous while wearing one. We originally opted out when the choice was given, but now the school board has taken that choice away from us. Why should he be forced to do what makes him feel sick, uncomfortable, or suffer in any way? Personally, I believe forced mask-wearing for long hours is a form of child abuse and is extremely detrimental to my son's physical and mental health. I know many other parents and students that feel the same way. However, most of them refuse to speak up because they are afraid of what their friends, employers, or clients may think, and they don't want to jeopardize their friendships and jobs. I completely understand this as I actually have felt the same way. But I've had enough and decided I need to do what is in the best interest of my child, even if it means I lose relationships and business because of it. My family and our health will always come first. I could argue that masks don't work. I could show scientific studies finding dangerous pathogens in the masks that children are breathing in. Wearing a mask improperly could do more harm than good, and I think we could all agree that young children don't wear them properly. They don't change them out often enough and constantly touch their faces, adjusting them. We could debate all day long, and if given a fair platform, I'm confident we would prove that masks simply don't work. Having said that, I'm not here to change your opinion on what works for you and your family. We just want the freedom to choose what's best for us. If nothing else, please answer this. Why, even when the county had mask mandates, could we walk into a restaurant and sit down mask-free? But students must remain masked at their desks. Perhaps we should exchange school desks for restaurant tables and then they would be safe to remove the mask while seated? To be clear, I'm perfectly fine if everyone else wants to wear a mask or send their children to school with masks. Of course, I could argue the negative side effects, but I just want the freedom of choice. I don't want to force a child or teacher to not wear a mask. How would all these parents or school officials feel if things were reversed and we were making mandates that prohibited them from wearing a mask on school property? We'd be infringing on their liberties regarding their individual bodies and personal health. I don't think they'd be happy about it or even tolerated or comply for that matter. I only wish they could look at our point of view the same way, and I wish you would as well. There is a ton of information and misinformation out there and we are all able to do our own research and draw our own conclusions. We just want the freedom of choice to take the available information and do what we believe is best for us and our health. There is no debate all day long, but I'm not here to try and convince anyone they should do differently than what they already believe is best for them. In conclusion, it's about our individual freedom and our personal choice to do what's best.
My name is Courtney Bishop and I would like to talk about the COVID policy. What is your endgame? We all know you have no endgame because of your past actions. This bait and switch that you did, you promised us since May that just give us a few more weeks of school and then you can take them off in August. They'll be optional. Then you let us get us settled into school, our kids bonded with their friends and teacher in school, and then out of left field flipped the switch to put the muzzles back on our kids, even though it's against the law, just so you can get funding for our kids. When our children ask for breathing breaks at school, they are denied access to fresh air and disciplined accordingly. Good kids are getting mask referrals. They are isolated in rooms. They are getting in-school suspensions for the first time in their lives. Straight A students who have never been in trouble before are getting in-school suspensions. Kids use these masks to wipe their boogers and they plaster the nasty bacteria Petri-filled dish over their faces. I can't really imagine how inhaling air through a cloth soaked in sweat, boogers, snot, and saliva for six to eight hours is deemed healthy for their growing body and lungs. They even swap their masks with their friends, drop them on the bathroom floor, and pick them back up and put them back on the floor. Our kids are going into the bathroom to get a break from the mask. This is such child abuse. And I want to address the parents who want to mask their kids and keep their kids safe. We hear you. We want the same thing for our kids. We want our kids safe. We support you. We want you to have that choice to mask your kids or not. We also want you to have the choice to vaccinate your child or not with the COVID vaccine. We also want you to know that the mask is just a placeholder for the vaccine. How they've been handling this is how they're going to handle all the things. All future medical decisions, if you give the school board the power now, they are practicing medicine without a license. So maybe you're okay with giving your child the experimental COVID vaccine. What about the HPV vaccine? Or if they come up with an experimental vaccine, RSV or the booster? What if they do that? Then you're giving all power to the board. When you give up your freedoms with things like the mask and you give up your freedoms for all future medical decisions, even if you don't agree with the medical decision or your pediatrician doesn't. They are making medical decisions for our children. Even if your child's doctor doesn't agree with the school board, you still have to follow. It is a death by a thousand cuts and we need to unite and stand up together now to stop the lawless school boards from taking away our medical rights as a parent because once they are gone, these medical rights, they do not come back. Thank you.
My name is Liza Diaz and I'd like to speak regarding the requirement for 504 and masks. On August 24th, 2021, I received a phone call from the school telling me my son had thrown up in school and had a sore throat and that because of this, I needed to pick him up from school. That was also the first day that my son had worn a mask in a really long time. When I got to school, they told me that I needed a negative test to have him come back to school. The school nurse was more concerned with getting my son out of school than his well-being. I asked her to have him tested in school and she said she couldn't because she had to go give other students in the school their maintenance medications. After insisting that he be tested in school, she had me wait 30 minutes outside in Florida, 90-degree weather. When she had him come in, his temperature was 100.4. Therefore, he couldn't come back for at least 24 hours. How reliable can that be, being to hang outside for 30 minutes? She tested my son and he tested positive, negative. No positive rapport was built with me on this day. This is the person that my child is supposed to go to when he's not doing well in school, feeling well in school. She didn't assess the situation correctly. She couldn't have thought that maybe he became nauseous from wearing a mask all day and that caused him to throw up. She couldn't have thought that his CO2 levels could have caused him to get lightheaded and that caused him to throw up. It was obvious that his temperature might have spiked since he sat outside for 30 minutes. No, she was mad at me for insisting that they test him in school versus going to one of the centers that she wanted me to go to. It's been one week and my son gets home exhausted from school. He is fatigued. Takes at least a two-hour nap, needs to be woken up to eat, do homework, shower, and go back to sleep. He wasn't like this before. He is an active kid. A doctor won't sign a slip for a medical exemption for masks for this reason. And this is why the opt-out option is important for parents. I should have a choice for my child to wear or not wear a mask. The chances of him being negatively impacted by COVID are slim. This isn't a population that should be carrying the burden. In closing, I'd like to leave you with this. Forget what the CDC says because you aren't listening to them anyway. If these masks work, why am I still getting the same amount of phone calls from the school when the children have been masked for almost two weeks and 97% of them have been wearing masks from the get-go? Thank you.
Hi, good day. My name is Laura Duffey. I'm calling to leave an agenda topic item for the workshop today. Normally, I speak at the meetings. Today, I'm not sitting at the meeting. I wanted to call in and discuss the mask mandates, COVID-19 protocol in schools, and then also the vaccination, upcoming vaccination requirements for children. So my kids, up until yesterday, attended a private Catholic school. One week into the school year, they decided to not follow the optional opt-out policy and mandate masks. Our line in the sand for that with our children was last year. They wore mesh masks for half of the year and we realized that the school did not care as long as the children had something on their face. This is obviously not science-driven. This is, you know, obviously conditioning. Masks did not work for our children before that. And the reason why we went to mesh masks is because our son had problems breathing and almost passed one on a hot day. My daughter had nausea and headaches. And so the opportunity to breathe freely was very important to us. This year, unfortunately, our school mandated masks again, even though they had an opportunity not to follow the district policy. I'm calling in to let everybody know that yesterday we decided to officially withdraw our children from private Catholic school that followed the district. We will not comply with these mask mandates anymore. We will not test our children. We will not obtain a doctor's note in front of the health system for any reason. These children are healthy. They don't need to be sent home in droves. And we realized when we were out serving our 10-day COVID protocol, initially a couple of days into school, that these children could be anywhere else besides school. And that school was actually a political war zone. These children can be at the mall, they can be at restaurants, they can be at beaches, they can be at events and venues, but at school, they have to be distanced, masks on, all that sort of stuff. This isn't right. You all know it's not right. It's wrong for these children. If you want masks on these children, then fine, then that is your choice as parents and the Bill of Rights should cover that. But it also should cover the parent's right to choose for our own children. So we decided not to comply with our... And we did actually tell them that we were leaving. I am delighted that there are so many resources for what they call homeschool.
Hi, this is Melissa Tellme. I'm calling in regarding policy number 5.326, student protocol due to COVID-19, in specific to number nine and number 10 under non-discrimination of students of ADA, Section 504, and ESE students. I'm calling in regarding some situations that have transpired since the opt-out was removed. In particular, there have been people who have been able to get a medical exemption from their doctors and they have been called into the school by the principal asking for additional information, even though they have provided it from a certified pediatrician. I'm not really understanding why people with Down Syndrome, autism, ADHD, and even people who are deaf, hard-of-hearing, people who don't, you know, people who can't, they need to work on their verbal cues. For example, people who have issues with learning how to speak properly. How is this all going to happen when you have a mask on? It just doesn't make a lot of sense. And also, if these people are getting what they're supposed to be getting from their doctors, why are the parents being harassed to get further information? Another thing that is important to mention is it's based in Section 9, A, B, and C. It says regulation of certain physical locations, isolation during school activities, and exclusion from any school-sponsored events. And they also, these people should not be subject to harassment or discriminatory treatment. There have been instances where kids have been taken to the front office alone to eat lunch with the principal as young as six years old. So are we going to talk about that? And also, recently, there's been a, instead of having, instead of being able to opt out of the Pledge of Allegiance, now the kids have to recite a safe protocol every morning. S-safe, you are safe when you wear your mask the right way, the right way to wear a mask because of your nose and mouth, accountable, you're accountable by wearing your mask over your nose and mouth the right way. S-fidelity, you need to bring your mask... Actually, E-excellence, do some excellence, wear their mask the right way. This is actually harassing and discriminatory treatment of the kids that cannot wear a mask because it makes them feel bad when they have to recite this or hear this on the announcement. They're essentially not able to abide to the safe rule. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do you want to start the workshop, please?
Yes, sir. We have two special guests here this afternoon. And in the interest of respecting their time, I'd like to invite Dr. Alina Alonso and Dr. Belma Andrick to address the board. They are here today for our policy workshop regarding a lot of the COVID-19 conditions we're facing. And they have agreed to stop by today, provide a presentation. The Department of Health remains a terrific partner of ours as we work through this pandemic, along with the Healthcare District. So, welcome, doctors. Thank you for being here today. And we appreciate your willingness to kind of give us an update on conditions in our community and the work we're doing jointly to work through these challenges. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Alina Alonso, Director for Department of Health for Palm Beach County.
Good morning, good afternoon, Superintendent and board members. A pleasure to be here with you once again. So I'm going to give you a quick update today, just some of the numbers so that we can go through it and give you some, the information that you'd like to have for this. I always like to start out with the national numbers so that you can see. Here is our, I hope, can you see when I point to it? Okay.
Yes.
So this is where we are now. Our cases have continued to go straight up. This is where we were in July. The peak occurred July 17th and then we went down and everything was going down. And then when we opened up and got ready for school, it started slowly going up in October, November, and then we had the holidays, we had our peak. Vaccinations came here in December and we started going down very nicely. We said, wow, this is over. And then we went hiccup, hiccup, and then we went down again. This is where we were towards the end of June. Then at the end of June, we kept saying we had to wait for... Then, at the end of June, we kept saying we had to wait for Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. And sure enough, almost at the timing exactly, we saw the super-spreaders that those two holidays occurred and so we started going up. The problem is here that at the end of July 17th, this curve started going back down. Here, July 17th, it continued to go up. So, what we're hoping for the best-case scenario would be that we can start having a little bit of a decrease. I'm going to show you some numbers that look hopeful and that then we would go down a little bit, just enough to get us back up again, then when the holidays come. And then, because of vaccinations, that we'd be able to go back down again. But that is just forecasting and it's hard to tell what this thing is going to do, especially, I'm going to show you some of the numbers of the Delta and see how that influences all this. So, this is what the country looks like right now. This is all from the CDC website. You all can go on this if you just Google CDC data tracker or COVID data tracker. You can get right on and you can see all these pictures that I'm showing you. I have all the websites here cited. So, the only one that looks like it's in moderate instead of, or I should say substantial, is Vermont here right now, but the entire country. Now, this does two things. This has caused a lot of problems for staffing, for the hospitals, to be able to get people across from different industries such as healthcare to help one another because the entire country is in the same shape that we are here in Florida. So, this is different. These are the four numbers that I think you can utilize to guide you in terms of how much community spread and then base your actions based on that community spread. So, this, we're in high now and that's as long as it's above 10. Substantial goes between 10 and then 5. Moderate, once you hit 5. And then, at the end of June, we were down to 2%. At 1%, you are at low. So, that is, the aim is to be at low when you start feeling comfortable that things might have an end. So, we're a long way from that. We basically are starting all over again in this high that we are at now. So, this is what I think even more important is how many cases we were getting per week. So, with our first hike in July, we were about 5,000 cases per week. So, we were under 1,000 per day. At the height of January 16th, we were at 6,000 cases per week. Now, we are at 9,000 cases per week. Now, we've gone down a little bit in the last week or so and we're keeping our fingers crossed that it's not just a little dip, but that it will actually come down a bit. So, we're very high. The community spread is very high and that's why we have to keep an eye on it. Now, why? It's basically because of this problem right here, the Delta. The Delta now nationally is at 99.1. That includes its two children that it's had, AY2 and AY1. There's also an AY3. But the AY2 makes up 0.2% and the other one, 0.1%. So, it's at 99.1% of all the variants. Everything else has disappeared. Now, you will continue to hear in the news about new variants here and there. Those are constantly coming up. So, don't get crazy about all these new variants that they're talking about. That is normal. Viruses have variants. That's how they continue to work. That's how they continue to circulate globally for the rest of their existence. We still have H1. That's what's in the flu vaccine. So, this variant is causing a lot of the trouble because not only is it more contagious, it's more easily spread from person to person, but it's also causing some of those breakthroughs where you hear people that have been vaccinated. The vaccine is doing its job. Why? Because the vaccine's job is to keep you out of the hospital and not dying. So, I don't want people saying the vaccine's not working. The vaccine is working exactly the way it's supposed to work. And so far, Alonso said so far, it's working against all of the variants. Now, it will get to the point, if we don't vaccinate enough people or enough people don't become immune to it, that it could then create a problem where you have a variant that's not responsive to the vaccine and then you have to develop a new vaccine. I'm sure they're already working on a new vaccine. Okay, so, our numbers here, you can compare Florida, the daily positivity down to 14. Ours now is down at 13.3. And what we have had is the count, we're down to 712. We are thrilled right now to have only 712 as opposed to the close to 2,000 that we were having. So, we're seeing a little dip. What we have to see, is this just a dip that's going to go back up or have we actually made a difference between the 11% increase in vaccination that we have had? Now, who's, who are the people that are getting vaccinated? The group that has had the largest increase is this group down here on the bottom, that these are the 12 to 19-year-olds, okay? They have had the highest peak. And I thank the Healthcare District for the great job they did over the summer in getting all those kids vaccinated and especially the parents for bringing them in and getting them vaccinated. So, this group is about 50%. The age right above them, the 20 to 29, is also doing pretty good, but they're just below 50%. So, when you see, and they tell you the total vaccinated, that means the people have gotten only one dose, those had completed the series, you add that up, you get total vaccinated. The number that we need to look at is the fully vaccinated, right? The ones who have completed their series. That's the number that really matters. So, be careful when people use different numbers because that throws some people off. They said, oh, the other day, you said 60, now it's 70. What's the deal? These are the different terminologies that are being used. So, you can see that this number, whether you use the 71% or you use the complete vaccination, is hyperinflated because these people, this is the 70 to 79-year-old and the 60 to 69, are above 90%. So, when you add, you take the average of all these people plus these that are only at 50, you come up with these numbers. So, we have a long way to go for this group. The ones who are flat is the 80 and over. These folks, a lot of them are in nursing homes or at homebound and they have sort of leveled off. They're getting a little bit more vaccinated now, but not a whole lot. And the group from 50 all the way down to this 30, so that group has been pretty parallel increasing, but not as much as the 12 to 19-year-olds. So, I'm very happy for that because that means these kids are the ones you've got in school and that's, that's good that we're getting there. Okay, so, what are the cases in children? I've been asked that a lot. I tried to create this graph to show you how these numbers are actually increasing. This is where we were back in May, June, and then in July, these numbers started going up. So, what you see right now is that the 13 to 18-year-old make about 39%, but the biggest chunk is in the 5 to 12-year-olds. That, right now, 49% of our cases. And then, the under 4 is only 12% of our cases. But these numbers have dramatically gone up. And that is why it's little, it makes sense, right? That you're having the problem you're having at school because you've got a lot of these kids that are actual cases. And of course, the under 12 can't be vaccinated. So, obviously, that's causing the parents. The parents are constantly asking me, when is the vaccine coming out? When is it coming out? I want to get my kids vaccinated. It's still slated Pfizer will be the one that will have it out beginning. And we believe the age is going to be 5 to 11. They hope to have it by late fall, early winter. They switch from actual months to just giving us that break. So, part of what happened is that because the number of cases went down, they had to wait a little longer than expected to get all the numbers that they needed in the study. And that's what, that's one advantage of having a lot of cases is that you get, the studies get done quicker because you have more people to put into your cases. So, that's just to give you a little picture of where we are and what the percentages are. The thing that we have now that is very useful, this is another thing that I'm being asked, is the number of new hospitalizations. PBCgov.org is the Palm Beach County site. They now have, on the top of their COVID banner, they have hospital dashboard. This is available every day. There's 14 hospitals that are reporting every day and they're telling them, they're saying the COVID admissions that they have as of last time, they had 90 admissions coming in, they had 72 going out. So, that's something that you look for in a hospital, right? You want to try to either have an even number, but you always try to have more people leaving than they're coming in. Right now, we're having more people coming in than out. That clogs up your hospital, obviously. The people dying, I want to make sure that no one says that I'm saying that the kids are dying. I'm saying we're having more cases, okay? We're not having little children dying. We're not having young people dying. Most of the people who are dying are the elderly. They continue to be the elderly, a lot from nursing homes, okay? And a lot of these peoples have other conditions. However, there are deaths that are occurring and we have to keep that in mind, okay? And we're also having the younger children having the multi-system inflammatory syndrome. That's very concerning. And we have a lot of folks, especially athletes, who are young, healthy men and women who are now on multiple inhalers and multiple heart conditions and multiple other things that they will have for the rest of their lives. The younger you are, the more chances you have of having long-term consequences, including mental health issues as a result of COVID. So, COVID, we all know now, is not just a cold. It's a serious condition and it will have even more long-term consequences. So, the other thing that we can gather from this is to see how much of the COVID admissions are children versus adults. 98%, this one shows it here, or 861 cases right here were admissions with COVID as adults and only 16 children or 2%. That is good. That has gone down. We also can see how many are in the ICU, adults versus children. 97% are adults, 6% or 3% are children. In terms of all admissions, of vaccinated and unvaccinated, that number has gone down drastically. Just a few weeks ago, early August, they were up to 98% of people were unvaccinated. Now, it's 81% of the people are unvaccinated and 19% are vaccinated. Some of those are elderly coming from the nursing homes and having problems. So, that's just a few of the things that you can gather from this. I think it's a good, we're very happy to be able to have this now. This is a lot of work for the hospitals to have to do this, as busy as they are, but we're finding it that's very important and that way, everybody can keep track and look at this and know how we're doing in the hospitals. So, please, next time you talk to a nurse or a doctor, please thank them. They're doing a phenomenal job. They're very stressed. They're working very long hours. There's not enough people to take care of COVID patients. Not only are they more difficult to take care of, they're more demanding. And the stress of doing this now for over a year and a half has taken a toll on all the medical professionals. So, please thank them and as well as I thank all of you for the job that you're doing here at the school board. So, we need to thank these folks. In summary, this continues to be a pandemic of unvaccinated people. The Delta virus is definitely playing a role in this. It continues to spread. And now, right here in Palm Beach County, it makes up 100% of the variants. It's 60% more contagious. It causes breakthrough cases. Hospitalizations are at a critical mass. You don't have to be one of those people in the hospital. Please, get vaccinated for you, for your family, and for the rest of your community that we deserve to take care of one another. So, thank you for your attention. If there's anything that you want, or you want to finish the presentation and then ask us questions or...
Dr. Alonso, if you don't mind, I'd like, some of the board members would like to ask you some questions before we move on.
Sure.
Vice Chairwoman Brill, then Mrs. Whitfield.
So, first, I just want to say thank you so much for making time out of your day, Dr. Alonso, for all of you to update us. It's terrific information. I do have two questions. So, I'm going to go with the first one and then after you answer, if I may, I'll ask the second one. My first question has to do with the flu vaccine. Last year, I know that it was recommended that everybody get a flu vaccine because of the, it would minimize the effects. And I won't go into the reasons, but what is your recommendation regarding flu vaccines this year?
Absolutely. The flu vaccine is very important. If you get the flu vaccine and you don't get the flu, that's one less thing that you have to worry about. Right now, the recommendation is any symptoms that you have do not go to work. And so, if you get your flu vaccine, that's one less thing you have to worry about. Last year, we had the lowest flu vaccine, flu conditions ever. Many of the asthmatics did not have to go on antibiotics. I mean, I think many people who have respiratory illnesses are actually going to be, especially asthmatics, they've told me, I'm wearing my mask this year for the flu season because it stopped me from getting the flu. It was the first time ever that I didn't have to go to the doctor's office and so forth. So, you know, that is one issue that is very important. Thank you for mentioning it. It's already available at the pharmacy. So, go ahead and roll your arm up and get the flu vaccine.
Thank you. And if I may ask my second question.
Ladies, go ahead.
My second question is whether, just out of curiosity, are they using the monoclonal antibody treatment on children as well as adults now?
Uh, no. We have the monoclonal available here at West Park, Westgate. I always want to change everybody's name, including my own, over at the, at Westgate. And you go through, you have to, in order to get the monoclonal therapy, you have to have a positive test. And then, you should be at risk, if you're at high risk for other illnesses like diabetes, HIV, any of those things. And that will help you because they're actually going to give you antibodies. So, that will help you not further the disease. So, it's very useful. It is available to us. If you don't have a physician, you can get it. The Surgeon General has a standing order. This is something the governor put together to help us have that treatment available. And he's spreading it throughout the state. So, it's another option for treatment for COVID.
Thank you.
Who's saying that? Stop with the comments over there or you're going to leave the room.
I'll go ahead and take another question.
Yeah, Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you.
Officer, who's doing that over there? Ask her, ask her to stop or she leaves. Go ahead, Mrs. Whitfield. That's your question.
Thank you so much. I just want to say a huge thank you for you guys coming today. This is something that I really appreciate, all the work that you've been doing. I do have two questions. The first one is about the pediatric ICU beds versus the adults. When they run out of space for adults, do they ever put them into the pediatric or is that reserved spaces just for children?
They try to keep it reserved. If you've ever gone into a pediatric unit, the beds are smaller. They're actually made for pediatric patients. However, the, if you notice on this side, that tells you the total capacity. They are over in beds in the, in the general and in the ICU. This minus number means that they have capacity for 341 beds, but they actually are using 356. So, they're in the minus. So, they're using more beds than what they have. What they've done in many of the hospitals is created extra areas where they can move beds to. And the pediatrics does have a capacity, they're at 24%, so they have 11 beds available in general. This is all the hospitals put together. You want to keep these numbers, you don't want to ever be more than 75% occupied so that you have 25% overflow in the beds. What this creates is that then, when somebody wants to get into the hospital, they're having to keep them in the ER. And there's a section here somewhere where it shows you how many people are being kept in the ER. It's on here somewhere. It's too little, I can't read it. But, so, take a look at that and that's what this is useful for. So, that kind of gives you the fact that we're really, the hospitals are definitely overwhelmed. They're doing a heroic job in moving things around, creating extra space, and moving those beds around.
Thank you so much.
And the ventilators are great. They have enough ventilators. These are the COVID ventilators and the regular, other than COVID, but they have enough capacity for the ventilation. So, we're good in that here in Palm Beach County.
Thank you. That, I mean, this is, these are very impactful numbers and I'm so glad you're sharing them with us. Can I ask you a little bit about contact tracing? One of the difficulties I know is that we've put such a burden on the Health Department by the school district, you know, relying on you and the work that you're doing. So, can you explain a little bit about how you guys are handling that extra burden and the, if you're adding staff or if you are kind of at the end of your limits, whatever it is? I really, I would just love to hear more about that.
It's not a burden at all. It's what we do. That's one of our primary jobs. Epidemiology is the, really, the building block of public health and we do that all the time. By the way, we do contact tracing for other things besides COVID. So, not only do we do this, but we still have hepatitis TB and all those other things that we also have to take care of. So, what we did... So what we did, yes, and we've added staff. We had staff when we were at those high peaks. We shifted some of that staff to do other functions, like immunizations and other things like that. So we've been doing community outreach with our vans, and we've been testing as well as vaccinating. The vaccinating has gone down, the testing has gone way up, and so we've been utilizing that staff. And when we saw this coming up, we were ready in July. I asked before we had the numbers going up, I told the state, "I'm going to need about sixty more people in the coming month if we go up." So we were first in line to get that staff, and indeed, when we started going up, we started asking for them, and we have gotten all the staff that we have requested. The problem is not getting the state to give us a staff or the positions, it's recruiting people. And because so many people are out of work, so many people are sick, you have to have extra staff. And one of the big concerns that we have is making sure we keep our staff healthy and continue to work, just like you're trying to keep your teachers healthy and continuing to work. But this is happening everywhere. This is affecting restaurants, it's affecting the hospitals, it's affecting all our businesses. So we have to make sure that people don't go to work sick, so that they can need to quarantine or isolate as needed, and that way they don't spread it to the other employees. So it's very important that they don't come to work sick.
Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you, Dr. Alonso and team. As I look at the graphs today and we listen, you've been with us from the beginning, this team has been with us. And when we see ourselves at one point, this is so fluid, we don't know where we'll be within the next five or six weeks from now, and we could see it from all of the months that we've been going through this. And I want to thank you all for continually informing us so that we can make the decisions based on the data, the health information, and how we're doing. Right now, you know, we thought we would be able to open the schools with mask optional, but this Delta virus came right in here and says, "No, it's not going to happen." And we saw, we could see it from your graphs, but we were making some progress. And we had all of the children home, we know the best place for our children is in front of a teacher within a school. And right now, we're in the situation where we're doing our best, we can't do six feet apart. I mean, that's why the masks are so important. Every mitigation process that we do right now is critical. With almost five thousand students out on quarantine, I worry. I'm so thankful to have a nurse in almost every school in Palm Beach County who can get started with the contract tracing and all of our staff, everybody working together to take care of the children. So I just know that we're going to need you to come back, and I know that, you know, we need you. As I talked to Mr. Burke, we're talking about making sure that we have some testing sites and some vaccine sites for the children, because we know that the little ones just don't have that protection right now because they don't have a vaccine. And I worry a lot, because the one question I want to ask you, I worry about the Glades region. It's a region where I know the hospital truly has been full, and they've had to maybe send people elsewhere. Can you tell me about Palm Beach County as we look at this? It doesn't say particularly where the most, most, everything's serious, but I do believe we have some areas of Palm Beach County that are much worse than others. So can you help me with that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I was on the, their Health Advisory Committee that met this morning, and they had a wonderful presentation on how the hospital's doing much better. The Healthcare District has again done a German job of being there. Your lines weren't too bad this morning, your van was there, they were vaccinating. But unfortunately, they're testing more than they're vaccinating, so that's not good. There's still a lot of hesitancy. So for an area that we knew was going to have difficulties, we specifically went out there. We worked with all the churches, we worked with all the community leaders. But the hesitancy continues to be there, and a lot of it is misinformed information that they have. Once they talk to you and they get the information, they say, "Oh, I didn't know that." So we're working really hard to try to get as much information to the folks that want the information. If you've already made up your mind, you know, you've made up your mind. But if there's still questions to be asked, if there's still information they need, we're there. We're doing all kinds of community outreaches. The hospital has been doing a really good job, they've been able to hook up with the VA hospital thanks to FEMA and to the federal aid that came to make the rural hospitals associate with the VAs. They were able to take some of those patients, and they have agreements now that the hospitals have been, have a little bit of relaxation in order to send patients to other hospitals if they need the, you know, the specialty care that they need at some of the, like the pediatric units that St. Mary's has and so forth. So that's some of the work that's being done out there. And they're, all the faith-based churches are trying really hard to, you know, give it one more shot. Also, the county has been doing a big media blitz in terms of encouraging folks to get vaccinated and get rid of the myths that are out there. So they're trying to do that to all those who want to listen.
Thank you, Dr. Alonso, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, so we'd also like to hear from Dr. Belma Andricks, she's the Chief Medical Officer for the Healthcare District, and she's joined by Ms. Cindy Dupont, who is Associate Vice President, and she oversees our school health program. Welcome. We're just making some changes here to the presentation.
No, no, no questions. No questions. No questions. Ma'am, stop. Officer.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for having us back. Today, I'm accompanied by Ms. Cindy Dupont, who is, as you said, Vice President in Healthcare District and directly oversee Healthcare District, uh, School Health Program. So we came in case that you have some questions that we can cover together. Today, I'm going to give you a little bit of update on vaccination efforts that we plan together with your administration, as well as overlook of where are our nurses this year and how they're working, how they're working together with old schools to kind of pull this year together the best we can. This is actually a view backwards, what we did this summer, but it's kind of good synopsis of vaccine initiatives that lasted around eight weeks, finished on August eighth, just before the school started. We parked our mobile clinic, vaccination clinic, on five different locations, four different locations around the county, conveniently located on your, I believe, superintendent offices, including this location as well. So we were open on Saturdays as well, and we did anything reasonably possible that we make very accessible and easy to access for parents after hours on Saturdays, because that was very soon after the age was expanded. And during those efforts, we provided fourteen hundred vaccines to the kids. You can see age distribution, majority of people receive vaccines in those locations, were children, but also their families, and that's what we plan to do also in the next period, that we plan to expand those on actually high schools' properties, as I'm going to talk a little bit about it. So this is actually what Dr. Alonso mentioned, around twenty percent of total vaccination to this age group that we gave. We are not only vaccinators in the community, but we are one of the main Pfizer providers, because not all doctor's offices offer Pfizer, because it's very complex call chain management. And for example, Public doesn't offer Pfizer either. So we want to really be offering Pfizer wherever we can and targeting this group in particular. As I mentioned, we plan, starting next week, to park our mobile clinic on multiple locations, multiple high schools. We will do two high school locations in the same day. We're going to park in the mornings between seven and eleven on one location, and then we're going to have two hours breaks. We're going to relocate in others. The goal is that during the three weeks, we hit all high schools, as well as middle school and elementary schools for employees who are still non-vaccinated, to kind of come on that property, to be kind of conveniently located in hours that they can maybe before the work. Another thing is that is important for this kind of approach, we need consent from the parents. Unlike testing, we need, we don't, we need not only consent, but also parents' presence. So that's why we are trying to do it before and after school, maybe on the drop-off, during the drop-off time, they can accompany child and kind of get that vaccine. So there are a couple of slides talk about screening and testing in the schoolrooms. Last year, we thought we were busy, it's nothing compared to this year when we have all children back. But thanks to the last year's experience, I think, although it's really busy and tough, I think they're doing awesome job. And this left side of this PowerPoint, of this slide talks about number of COVID screenings. So those ten thousand screenings that we did in the first three weeks of school actually are children who come to school with symptoms or develop symptoms during the hours and sent to the health room, to the nurse to screen them. You can see here that thirty-three percent of those kids, screening was positive, which means they had one of the major symptoms or two of the minor symptoms that are listed on the bottom. That nurse then make assessment and decision, this child needs to be tested, this might be a COVID. It doesn't mean it's a COVID, but she recommends testing. For children that we are able to obtain consent through the school administration, we test them right away. And that's what you now have in the right section, three thousand and two hundred students' tests were collected. That doesn't mean they're performing in the schools, this is like student went home or they were tested in the school. So you can see in-house testing percentage, how many we conducted, thirteen or thirteen hundred. You can see how many hard copies of tests we obtained, and also verbal results. This is hit and miss, some parents don't follow up enough to isolate the children for the rest of the time, but kind of just idea how many collected results of the tests we had. Then you have in-house testing by school level, you can see elementary versus middle versus high, and the symptoms as well as gender distribution. Gender distribution is pretty equal, boys and girls are equally tested and screened. This slide goes a little bit more in detail of our in-house testing. You can see positive in the high schools, I mean, schools that are in order for the highest number of positive in-house testing. Those are the tests that nurses conducted, and you can see from the top down who are the schools that have highest, in first three weeks, highest number of in-house rapid antigen test positives. On the left-hand side, I love this side because it's very operational, and Cindy lives in those dashboards, and definitely segueing our mutual discussions between school district and us and Department of Health, operationally how we cover the schools. You can see hours when they're busiest doing screenings, and the right-hand side, you can see when they're busiest doing testing. So that's how we plan, that's how we can maybe sometimes move the nurse in the afternoon to some other school who doesn't have it when we are short. And that's what we are trying to really be very data-driven when we make those decisions, and I wanted to share that video. These slides is actually my favorite, because we don't do only COVID. This is kind of summary of everything that is happening in health room, and we never stop doing that. And we are still able to do with all this COVID activities. On the bottom, you can see visit type, screening. Ninety-five percent of the screening is still COVID, but we still do other screenings that we are obligated to the state, such as chole最后一个 and BMI, we started doing that. And you can see the majority of their business is screenings, but forty thousand room, health room visits also go to the different office visits, medication administration, procedures, as well as different consultations. And you also can see hours of distribution. You can see which schools are busiest based on all assessment on the left top section. Also, distribution by top of, type of the school on the left bottom. The right bottom talks about nurses and designees. Designees help, and this is the number of the visitors designees performed. And most importantly, you can see the majority of kids still go back to the classroom, but it's absolute, our absolute priority, especially during this hard year. Absentism is something that is worrisome for all of us, and we try anything reasonable in our power to keep kids in the school and never send them home if it's not really necessary. You can see also emergency calls. So all in all, you can see that boys are more often in the health room than girls. I think when you break down this a little bit more, you can see a lot of scraped knees and bumped heads in the boys, because this slide talks also about general office visits. And that concludes my presentation. I'm just going to finish with sharing that our cooperation between those three agencies, school district, health department, and healthcare district was never better. I think during last year, we learned much better to work together. I think we are in a great position to have all those resources and really absolute dedication from all three agencies to help school district to have a successful year. I think resilience and hope is what we talk very often, we don't have any other choice.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you so much, and I'd love to see these slides up close. They're great, but I can't quite read all the details on them, but I'm very glad you came to present them to us. I'm really concerned about the nurses in our schools and the burden that is on them, and I keep talking about burden, but this is just, it just keeps coming. So I visited a few schools this week and had an opportunity to talk to some of our nurses who are extremely overwhelmed and really need more help. Is that something that you think the Healthcare District will be looking into? Is trying to find, you know, additional funds for nurses? Is that completely on us and our COVID dollars? How is it we can give more support to these?
It's all over the above, and that's why we're monitoring those numbers and sending help and addressing this whenever we can. But Dr. Alonso said something very important, all healthcare is so short on employees that we all struggle. I mean, clinics, hospitals, school health. But I think that it's not only healthcare district issue, it's a mutual, three-agency, on daily basis discussions, how to make this really the least painful and very cognizant of their burnout. You know, we bring them once a month, we were just talking, coming here, right? We're trying the best to listen, to see where we can help them, to utilize satellites rooms, to have designees help the best they can, but, you know, we just have to live through this.
Mrs. Andrews, then Vice Chairwoman Brill.
Thank you, and when we look at the dashboards, I think they're awesome. They help us at real time, knowing exactly what's going on. But I know when I look at the dashboard and I see sometimes elementary schools have more breakout cases, and then you see high schools in certain areas. And parents are so concerned when they look at the dashboard and they see that maybe their school had a whole lot of cases. And we're trying to be as, we were trying to have as much positive communications to parents to let them know, this is a pandemic, it could happen. We don't know where a child has been before they came to school. And it's not about maybe your school in particular, it's just about where we are in life right now as we work with this virus, this COVID-19 and this Delta. And so I just want to know if, as we're working as a school board, how can we try to ease the parents' minds about, you know, if it happens at their school and there's a contact trace and the children have to go home? We're really trying to make sure they have their work so that they don't miss out. We're doing everything that we can. But I always tell parents just to try to hold on, because it could happen anywhere. It may not have really been at the school, they just came to school. So I think we have to kind of educate people and let them know, it may not be just right at the school, it may have come to the school, because they were out somewhere doing something else. So any advice can you give us so that when parents are listening to you today? First of all, I heard you, and I want people in the audience and everywhere to know that when we're talking about vaccines, we're going to make sure the parent is there. We're not talking about a note or a school taking somebody out of class or before school at lunch to give a test or a vaccine, this is with the parent. So I just want to make sure that's clear. But I also want to make sure parents know that this is so sensitive now, we don't know what could happen to any of us, and we want to try to work together. So if there's any advice you can tell to the parents that we're all working through this together? We see a little, a little bit, you know, from the graphs today, but we don't know where we'll be tomorrow. So can you share with parents what kind of things that you'd advise for them? If something happened to them as it relates to their child? As far as being diagnosed quickly that they do have the COVID, or if they have to be quarantined?
I think everything that we are doing and what you are doing with increasing testing, it's going to kind of bring a lot of ease on parents, even if the kid was in the same classroom. That kind of easy, accessible testing will bring naturally some ease. But also those mitigation strategies that we are doing, kids are just a reflection of our community. When the numbers go down in the community, the numbers will go down in the school, and we have less and less risk. So I think kids are at risk just equivalent to any other community. And I think mitigation strategies that we have, as well as in-school testing, that really prevents, this test that we have in schools is actually test of transmissibility. prevents, this test that we have in schools is actually test of transmissibility. So we try to really cut early any transmissibility potential for children who have any respiratory symptoms. And adding the drive-through testing that I heard you guys are doing is actually great avenue to ease those worries. And I'll be utilizing that a lot for my child.
Vice Chair Brill?
Thank you, and thank you again for your presentation. So you sort of addressed the biggest frustration that I'm hearing from parents whose children have been at home, have been positive and are quarantining is they want their child tested before they go back to school. They understand that they don't have to. If there's a certain period of time that's elapsed, but they want to make sure that their children are not spreading the virus. And so thank you for the MOU because that will help having those two sites. I, you know, it helps and I don't want to sound ungrateful, but I don't think it's enough because we really need more sites. And I'm just going to throw out something that I've shared with Mr. Burke as my wish list. I know you're working with us with our students, but I do hope that sometime in the not-too-distant future, we can have some type of agreement that for our school-based staff who go to school who are feeling fine and then all of a sudden, and I've heard several cases where they're in the school and all of a sudden don't feel well, that we would have the opportunity to test them as well at the school sites if we could come up with a partnership. So I'm just putting that out there. Thank you.
Dr. Hendrick, let me ask you a question. Would you just make it absolutely clear that you're not intending to make the vaccines mandatory for our employees or staff when you visit our schools? That it's totally voluntary and there's no, there's no thought on your part that we're going to require anyone to get the vaccine if they don't want it?
We don't even have authority to do that. That's...
All right. One of the speakers just suggested earlier that we were on that trail, and I just want to make sure that when they hear that we're going to put testing and vaccines on our campuses, it's clear that we are not, we are not authorizing mandatory, you know, vaccination of our employees, our students.
No, not at all.
Vaccination initiatives and mobile clinic is coming to provide vaccine is no different than going to Publix. It's your choice to get vaccine. We're just making very, very convenient for people who maybe were too busy and life is busy these days for parents who have multiple kids. And maybe this is a moment that they're going to stop by and gather because they want vaccine. So that we are just making very convenient and accessible.
All right, thank you. And a question for you, for you, Dr. Alonso. Obviously, there's people here that have questions. Our board policy doesn't allow for that to happen at this meeting, but can you share an email address where people, like the people that are here tonight that have questions or other people can ask questions of the health department and get answers?
Well, they definitely can call the health department. There is an 800 number that has, and there's also our website, PBCHD, PBCHD.com is our website. There's numbers there. There are frequently asked questions. Every question that I hear is on there. For example, the one that I mentioned today, while I was talking, I said we've only had one child die here in Palm Beach County. So I am in no way saying that our infant rates are high at all. I wanted to make that as a point. So a lot of the questions that they have are on there. I would, I would go to the website. I have the numbers there. There's also, if they don't want to call us here, they can call the state. And the CDC has numbers that you can actually talk with doctors at the CDC or that your physician can talk with a doctor at the CDC to get some of the specific disease, specific conditions with either the vaccine or the protocols or anything else that's available. So there's a lot of resources. It's a matter of where people choose to get their information.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Whitfield and then Dr. Robinson, I believe.
Thank you. So one thing I think might help people is to feel that there's an end ever to the masks. So would you feel comfortable sharing with us at what point you would be, you would support the school district in going back to an opt-out? Is there a metric that you're looking at? Is there a number? Is there some hospitalization?
The metric that I have given is the community spread that helps you make some of these decisions. But the decisions that you're making here are way above just data. You guys are making decisions based on the kids that you have, on your staff, on your availability to maintain staff that are not sick in your place. So the decisions you're making as a board has a lot more to do than just with data. And so I can't make those decisions for you. But I have given you the tool, which is what's used in most governments, and it's used for emergency preparedness and it's used for all these things, is the data that comes from our daily positivity, our number of cases going up or down, how the hospitals are doing and how staffing is doing. Like right now, we have a shortage of bus drivers. We have shortage in the community of drivers. There's supplies. Taco Bell is closed on Belvedere. Burger King has a sign saying we're out of food at Burger King because of lack of delivery trucks. So these kinds of things are going all across all our industry. So it's much more than just, you know, what we do because of stats. This has a ripple effect across the entire country and the entire community here locally. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Okay, thank you. I cannot resist the urge to say I'm a little bit concerned that you know about the fast food places that are closed.
Hey.
So first, let me just publicly thank each of you, right? So Dr. Alonso, I don't really know how you're still standing, right? So whatever vitamins you're taking, I need to take those because I know that like you've been like frontline on this for what, 18 months or something? And, and I really appreciate the longstanding partnership, but also the partnership in times of crisis like we're in. And, and I really appreciate the thought partnership as we try to work through some of these, these issues. So a couple of things. So I want to, I also want to add my thanks for the, the mobile vaccines for Dr. Hendrick and also the, the drive-through testing that will be available. And I also want to note that I saw on the news, the monoclonal antibody being made available, I think for uninsured people that you secured the funding for. So that's, you know, applause, applause, right? So a couple of things. So first, I just want to make the point, because I've said this to a couple of people, as bad as it is, is actually worse because, and tell me if I'm wrong, the numbers that we're seeing are not including home tests necessarily, right? Right? And so, you know, so yeah, the place is on fire. So, okay. I also thank you, Dr. Alonso, and I want to highlight the point that you made about the potential long-term consequences to COVID infection. I've said for a while that this is a disease of inflammation. We see it clearly in the MISC in children, but it's a disease of inflammation in anybody who gets it. And it frightens me that when people heal, a lot of times they heal essentially with scar, right? So like in 20 years, I think I'm afraid that we might see this huge uptick like an interstitial lung disease. So it's, it's just, death is not the endpoint for me, right? And so our children, you know, hopefully have long, you know, vibrant lives ahead of them. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to improve the odds of them having that long vibrant life, that is, that we're not just looking at mortality, but morbidity and quality of life. So I want to also like reconfirm, because the way I heard it, the way Dr. Hendrick made her statement, I just want to reconfirm that nobody's getting tested by the school nurse without parent consent.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the last thing is, will the school nurses be able to test for flu this season?
No.
No.
Okay, can we figure that? Let's just put that in our think about it, figure it out list, okay, please? And then the last thing, just don't say no, Dr. Hendrick. Just say, let's think about it, right? So let's just see.
In a perfect world.
We know it would be wonderful, right? Okay. And then the last thing, this just dawned on me as I think Ms. Brill was asking about testing the adults, and I realized there's some issues there. So, you know, these home tests that the nurses are using the same Abbott, Binax Now test that's sold, you know, at the pharmacies, right? In theory, okay, I'm just making stuff up, just putting it out there and not looking for an answer, just putting it out there. We could buy some of those tests and staff can test themselves, like with somebody observing or something. So let's just, because there's an awful lot of anxiety, you know, out there when somebody gets, it could actually be the back-to-school mess that goes around every year, right? But there's a lot of anxiety. And so I think it would be not only reassuring, but a good health measure if we could figure out how to provide those tests for staff. So I'm just putting it out there and, and thank you, thank you for everything, all three of you.
You don't have to thank me. That's my job. It's okay. I love it.
All right. Well, thank you, good doctors, for taking time to be here. Dr. Alonso, Dr. Hendrick, Ms. Dupont. We greatly appreciate your ongoing partnership and support and thanks again.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
I just want to mention to the board, we have received a letter. At last count, it was 85 plus pediatricians, local pediatricians, that I want to read into the record when we get to the, the policy workshop. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and transition to your legislative workshop. This is the board's opportunity to discuss your upcoming, I'm sorry, your priorities for the upcoming legislative session. With this being 2022, it's an even year, it's an election year. The legislature will convene early on January 11th. Committee meetings actually start on September 20th. So this is a timely conversation. I'd like to welcome, we're going to have some virtual guests here today for the legislative workshop. I'd like to welcome our Chief of Staff, Jay Bogus, and our legislative liaisons, Mr. Ron LaFace, Megan Fay, and Rita Solnet. So they should be coming to the screen here soon.
We're here, Mr. Burke. Glad to serve with the pleasure of the board and you. As I believe staff comes to the table to help present.
One moment, Ms. Bogus.
Not a problem.
[inaudible]
All right, Mr. Bogus, we have, you've got our full attention again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chairman Bariere, Vice Chairwoman Brill, School Board, good afternoon. We are coming today with our 2022 Legislative Platform Workshop. And as a result, we've got three great team members that have been part of this district team for quite some time now. And they're going to hear, you're going to hear from them around what the work we've done to this point around preparation for 2022 Legislative Platform. We're also going to kind of highlight some of the past wins that we've had as far as 2021. Prior to that, I'm going to kind of give us a run-of-show of what all that's going to look like. But I want to make sure that really I get the opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Ed Tierney as we made this transition. He helped prepare much of this presentation and then passed the baton to me in order for preparation for today. As part, today is our kickoff. This is not the ending point of any of these conversations. This is a draft. And as we continue the ongoing work all the way through until October 6th, where the board will have the opportunity to vote on a final legislative platform, I want to know that this is an open conduit and we will continue to build on conversations, that anything that might not get fleshed out today will be coming back September 22nd and then for a final on October 6th. With that said, you're going to hear about the work that this team has done, specific from Ms. Rita Solnet from our federal initiatives and some of the work that she's done with our board up until this point, Ms. Megan Fay from Capital City Consulting, and Mr. Ron LaFace as well, and that interface between staff. So before we get started, I want to make sure we always highlight the past work that is done. There's four key initiatives that, that really stand out from the 2021 legislative session. And the first of that is the change to statute around the advisory committees being able to meet virtually. This made a permanent practice that began during COVID-19 in the state of emergency and really a best practice to date. The second is change the statute to allow high-performing districts like Palm Beach to semitic plan to FDOE to offer two days of virtual learning during teacher planning that counted towards 180 required instructional days. The third is around after several years of lobbying, the required local effort was not rolled back, allowed to grow to capture the annual increase in property values. This was the first time since 2015. I'll speak specifically to Mr. Burke's initiative as CFO and his catchy phrase around Aretha Franklin's RLE, what does it mean to me? So Mr. Burke, there's a shout-out for you. And last but not least, secured a $426,000 West Tech appropriation that was approved from the governor and that we continue to work with. As we set the agenda for today, Ms. Rita Solnet's going to work us through seven key criteria or buckets of work, key priorities that we've had conversations with the board up until this point and really giving you the opportunity to hear an executive summary from Ms. Solnet. And then we're going to go through each of those priorities to have the dialogue and interface with our contracted lobbyists. At this time, we'll present Ms. Solnet, and you should have the screen available to you.
Good afternoon. So first of all, I want to thank you, all of you, for taking the time with me to identify your initial thoughts on legislative priorities. I realize that your time is precious and that you've been faced with having to make some very difficult decisions. So I really appreciate you taking the time to focus a little bit on next year. So as Mr. Bogus mentioned, I will present a quick recap. So this, which you all have on your systems, this is a draft of a working set of legislative priorities, and this is your draft, okay? This represents your input. And today, we may add to it, we may subtract from it, we may revise it. And this is just, this is step one. You'll probably have another crack at this. So the next step here is on or before September 22nd, we will take the work that, that you all did today and hand it to you in preparation for your October 6th workshop where you will have a final vote. And while I'm on calendars, you might want to put down November 10th. That will be the day that we do the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Meeting. They haven't selected a venue yet, but that is the date, November 10th. Okay. As you can see, there are eight categories. I want to direct your attention. Next chart to, the chart that says 2022 Legislative Priorities and it says Jay Bogus, Chief of Staff in the left-hand corner. So these are the eight categories that really came from my conversations with all of you. Local control, students, distance learning, VPK, finance, teachers, any legislation that impacts school board members, and of course appropriation requests. I can say your overarching goal, hands down with all of you, was the issue of local control. You want to make sure that all of the legislative bills are evaluated to ensure that the language doesn't conflict with constitutional authority of school boards. So next chart is actually local control. What you told me is you want to ensure that the homeroom principal guides school districts. You want to ensure that the laws adhere to the constitutional authority of school boards, especially in the case of emergency situations like we're in now, whether it's pandemics or hurricanes, local tragedies. You also said you wanted to ensure the ability to use all the resources that we currently have to mitigate these emergency situations, such as distance learning, such as technology and funds. Next chart. So there were two items on, under students. So this category is really students. The first item was graduation requirements. You said that you'd like a delay in the implementation of the concordance score changes to the Florida standards needed to graduate. I think one of your speakers, Mrs. Postal, earlier tonight talked about this. Students will be impacted this year severely. I think the district staff did some predictive analysis, so they may want to talk to you about it sometime between now and the 22nd. But because of the changes, there's a more rigorous bar that students have to meet on the ACT and SAT. And you told me that you felt therefore that the request to delay was a reasonable request, given that the Florida best standards wouldn't go into effect until next year for third grade and above, and also because this year, students have been impacted by fluctuations caused by the pandemic. You know, there's so many kids in quarantine. fluctuations caused by the pandemic, you know, there's so many kids in quarantine. And so that was item number two. Next chart.
Ms. Solnet, I'm sorry, I'd just like to interject for a second. So one of the things we've worked on this year with Mr. Tierney and staff is we're gonna provide more opportunities during the school day for 11th and 12th graders to take the ACT and get some tutoring for that. So even if we do not get this delay, we'll hopefully be better prepared and give the kids more opportunities to, to meet this requirement. Thank you, Ms. Solnet, sorry, I just wanted to throw that in.
No, that's great, thank you. So the next chart is students' mental health services. So due to the growing need of mental health services, you told me that you'd like to pursue an increase in the mental health personnel, school psychologists, social workers on contract, school counselors, school nurses, but you also said to pursue any obstacles in the way of hiring these professionals, whether it's, you know, maybe methods to streamline the, if, if it's bureaucratic to try and get these folks on board, just to streamline the process. Next chart is distance learning. You told me that you wanted the ability to reinstate the use of remote learning in our classrooms at your discretion, and that funding sources would align with this request too. This is just a thought, just this category may, could easily fall under local control if you'd like, I don't know if we need a separate category, I'll just throw that out there because I really don't know how this will flush out. Next chart is voluntary pre-K, and I think Mrs. Whitfield and I would both say we've probably seen this first item on the, on our legislative platform for at least four years now, but maybe 2022 will be the magic year, but amend the VPK to a high quality full day program. Also amend the education statute to allow certified pre-K teachers to be included in salary and retirement benefits which are currently only provided to K to 12 teachers. And one last item, revise the school readiness program application to permit funding for after-school wraparound services for K, for pre-K. Next chart is finance, and no, I'm not gonna sing the RLE, by the way. Maintain the full calculation of required local effort to include property reassessments and new construction. We'd like, I think you mentioned to me that you would like new mandates to be fully funded without transferring funds from the base student allocation or from discretionary local effort, and you said that you wanted to ensure that no diversions to local district capital outlay would occur if possible. Next chart is also finance. You also mentioned that you wanted to ensure timely receipt to school districts of COVID-related or emergency-related funds which the state receives from the federal government. So this is going to end up being both a federal priority as well as a state priority, if, if you so choose in your final form of this. Next chart, teachers. Hold teachers harmless for calculation of 2021 value-added measurement due to high number of quarantined students and current inability to use remote learning. And also you said you'd like to continue to pursue avenues to increase veteran, veteran teacher salaries. Two more categories left before I turn it over to you all. Legislation that impacts school board members. Monitor all legislation for impacts to school board term limits, school board salaries, or even the very position of school board members. We want to make sure we look at all the legislation. I think last year, some of these items were actually embedded in other bills. Next chart is appropriation requests. There were ongoing projects that the state of Florida previously invested funds in, and we want to see if that's sustainable. So one is look at continued grants for West Tech apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship programs, and the other was seek funding for Historic Roosevelt. Next chart. This chart should actually read federal legislative priorities for 2022. I'm saying that for those of us that are taking notes. So what we did last year is with the federal priorities, we basically take positions. These are the items that the school district of Palm Beach County support, and these are the items that the school district of Palm Beach County oppose. So we support all efforts to pass the infrastructure bill, also known as the American Jobs Act. It has already passed in the Senate, has yet to pass in the House. The reason we want that to pass is because there is money in there for expanding broadband, drinking water, and roads and buses. They did strip that of the $100 million for, I think they called it, for crumbling school facilities. That is in the, the next one, all efforts to pass the Budget Reconciliation Bill, which contains funding for rebuilding school facilities. That bill also contains funding for universal pre-K for all three and four-year-olds, by the way. Another issue that the Palm Beach County School District supports is an increase in the federal IDEA program to its originally proposed 40% of the cost needed to meet special education. I think I've talked about this several times. When this first came out, school districts were supposed to get reimbursed up to 40% of the costs that they spend on special education needs for special education students, and it's really never gone above about 18% of, that we've gotten back, and I think it's hovering around 14%. So there are efforts underway to bring that number back up to the 40% reimbursement. Next chart is, this should also be titled federal legislative priorities. The school district of Palm Beach County supports all efforts to support a federal universal school lunch program for all students. There are a number of organizations in Washington right now trying to push this item forward, so we support that. And lastly, all efforts to redirect emergency funding reimbursements to go possibly to school districts. And the last, all efforts to reinstitute the J-1 visa program as it relates to bringing in ELL teachers. Let me just say for a quick second on that program, that's run by the Department of Homeland Security and the State Department. It's under new administration and new leadership, and so they're, they're trying to work out how they're gonna handle the J-1 visa program again, and I believe they'll have some program in place in the next 60 days. They're, they're making some changes to it. A big problem with this right now is the pandemic. There are certain countries they're not allowing to come in. And next chart, the school district of Palm Beach County opposes any provisions that divert substantial federal dollars into competitive grant programs, and they oppose, will, you oppose federal funding formula changes that would divert funds away from traditional public schools. So that's a quick overview of what you all said, and I was hoping that while I was doing that, you were taking copious notes so we can go back in order of those categories and, and you can just say what you like, what you didn't like, what you want to add. So unless Ron and Megan want to say anything now, I can turn, turn it over, or maybe you'll turn it over to Frank?
Yes, Ms. Solnet, at this time, I would ask Mr. LaFace and Ms. Fay if you have any comments, if not, I would turn it back to Chairman Barbieri to open it up for school board members and interface with this lobbyist team.
Thank you, Mr. Bogus. First, let me thank Ms. Solnet, that was a very thorough job, first of spending time with all of the board members to get their, their concerns and then, then walking through them in a very concise manner. I mean, a lot of these issues are issues that we have been working on for many years, and we know they are priorities of this board, and certainly, you know, whether they're on this piece of paper or not, they're at the forefront of our minds as we're looking at issues on your behalf. But, but this is really, as, as it's been discussed, the first opportunity to get feedback from the board as to whether, how we view, because there's a number of issues that come up with school districts, but how we view as priorities that we focus on rule number, you know, rule number one when they come out. And so the point of today is to kind of really hear that feedback, affirm or disaffirm, you know, the priority of these issues and the importance, and then we'll follow up with another workshop to kind of finalize it and then have it in a position for final adoption. So with that, Bogus, I'll turn it back to you.
Excellent, thank you, Ron, appreciate it. And Mr. Barbieri, at this time, we are, we're prepared to take on questions, comments, and again, this is the, the school board's opportunity to work and interface with this team and know that we did attach staff recommendations, but we're trying to dedicate the time to the school board priorities at this point, and then coalesce staff priorities as this process continues to, to build schema and unfold as we play it out. So, Mr. Barbieri, at this time, it's yours.
Mr. Superintendent, first?
Yes, before we turn it over to the board, as your former CFO, I can't resist the opportunity just to point out a couple things. I think our team has really got our work cut out for us this year. The state legislative budget request recently came out for next year, and it only calls for a $6.35 increase in total student funding. That's a 0.08% increase, and we saw very lean budget for the current year we're in. And I feel like the, the mindset in Tallahassee is that we are awash in federal dollars and the state gets to take the next three years off when increasing state funding. And that's, that's a grave concern for me because we rely on increases to our base student allocation to keep up with the rising costs, whether it's FRS, whether it's employee salaries, whether it's FPNL's rate increase. And just because we have a big bucket of federal dollars doesn't mean it can be used to sustain all these ongoing increased operating costs. So, you know, I just want to share that for the record, I know our team will work hard, I appreciate the presentation that they've, they've brought us here today, and I just wanted to share that as the board then kind of goes, and I'll turn to discussion, this is your meeting, but I felt like that was important.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Robinson, then Ms. Brill, then Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. I have a number of things, so I think I'll do them in two rounds if you don't mind. So the first thing is I'm glad that we're here to talk about how, how the board sees the legislative agenda. I think that, because in fact, we're the body that has to vote on it and take this forward, right? But, but I do, the next time this comes around, I would like to know what staff thinks the priority should be, or, because they see things that we don't see, and, and so I don't want to miss anything. I'm crystal clear, at the top of my list are the, the concordant scores. Local control, yes, absolutely, but the concordant scores will be impacting students, and so I want us to go hard on that. I also want us to look at, again, requesting that the high stakes accountability be, for students be waived again. We, we know, you know, we know, we just know that it's not a good situation for academic acceleration. Hopefully next year, we will be able to really shift in the, you know, third, fourth, and fifth gear, but, but things are still too disruptive. And so I know that we had on our list last time about third grade retention, the grade level promotion, and graduation based on the FSA, so I'm gonna ask that the board consider adding that back to our legislative agenda list. And then, I think I had a couple, I'll ask one or two more things and then come back to me. So on the part about the VPK, are we requesting that funding be increased for private pre-K centers as well as home childcare centers or home childcare providers? Because that's where the, the bulk of the students are that come into our system. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not just advocating for increased funding for pre-K centers that are located in our elementary schools. I mean, so can somebody tell me where we are with that?
It can be what you want it to be, you know, this is your, yeah, this is the board's platform.
Okay, so then, I'm gonna say that's my position, that we should fight for more money for all early childhood education sites, and I'll wait and see how my fellow board members feel about that. And then the last thing before I take my pause will be that, and the details are not crystal clear in my mind, but as I recall, there's a state statute that requires that we consider contracting with prison-based industries, essentially, right? And as I understand it, then when they go in for the competitive bid, they win because, you know, they've got the prison industrial complex going on and pay people next to nothing. And so my request is that we add to our agenda that that be removed from legislation. And so I'll pause to, you know, hear the feedback from my fellow board members on my, on those requests, and then put me back on the cycle, please, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, Chairman Barbieri, we do have a comment back on pre-K. Mr. LaFace, could you comment to the, the pre-K initiative?
Yes, thank you, and Dr. Robinson, I just wanted to make the point that, that the way that this is written on this desk, on the deck, I view this to be a full-day program for every student in VPK, whether they're at a district, whether they're at a district center or at a private provider. So that's the way that I read it as written, if that needs to be clarified or disagrees, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, so thank you for that, and I will hope as the board discusses this, that the board members will address their position on that so it can be crystal clear to everyone. Thanks.
Board members, so we just can keep order on, on what we're doing. So we just addressed Dr. Robinson's first to find out who's on board with what she wants, and then we'll move on to the, the next issue. So anybody want to follow up with, on Dr. Robinson's pre-K and the, Mrs. Whitfield, Ms. Brill?
Yeah, my understanding is that it would be, that we would create the program so that VPK certificates could be given out, and then the parent can choose wherever they want to go to. So I think that the full day is very important, something I really, really support, but obviously within many of the communities in Florida, including ours, the private providers really do have the bulk, so parent can choose wherever they would like to take that certificate, and that would be my preference.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, the concordant scores, that's a big deal, that's one of my number one, I think we have to do that. And when we're looking at those students, this year we did get the waiver of school grades, looking at the third grade, you know, the, the portfolio piece, I think we need to make sure we drill down on that. When we look at how we're doing now with this pandemic, and our students are so far behind, we saw that with the testing because of this pandemic, that we've got to have those waivers in place for graduation requirements. Remember, there were quite a few things that we had, we had been able to waive this past year, and that just needs to be, the same thing again, all of that and more, because we're still in the death of destruction with this pandemic. So I definitely want to make sure that we look at third grade as well as high school, the concordant scores, I'm right on that, so that's where I am.
Vice Chair Brill?
Thank you. So, Dr. Robinson, you and I are on the, completely on the same page, and I was delighted to hear our speaker and hear my colleagues talk about concordant scores because as Ms. Solnet knows, that was my top priority, that and Home Rule, and I completely concur also with VPK. Before I forget, I do want to thank Ms. Solnet for capturing all of the, the details that we provided to her, but I really think this is the first of very important workshops since this is going to be a tough year. I think we need to schedule another workshop sooner rather than later, and I agree with, with Dr. Robinson, I'd like to see our list of priorities from last year so that we can see if there's, and I meant to bring them with me, but see if we want to pick anything up from there. And also, Mr. Bogus, I know you're new to this, but we've always said we don't want to have terrifically long laundry lists of items, however, you need to use us because many of us interface with members of our delegation on a regular basis. I typically see at least one or two of our legislative delegation every month. So, you know, once we agree on a platform, we should encourage each other that when we have the opportunity to bring forward items to them that we do prior to and after we have our meeting with them, because we don't know what it's going to look like with COVID and if we're going to be up in Tallahassee this coming year. So I just, I want to agree with Dr. Robinson on her priorities, and yes, concordant scores and Home Rule are my top two.
Any other board members want to, on, comment on that, on those? All right, we'll move on to the next. I need to see a hand if somebody wants to go next. Mrs. Andrews?
I almost want this one to happen now, since this is for next year, Ms. Solnet and Mr. LaFace and Mr. Bogus, I'll stick with what we're talking about. But I think the virtual distance learning, the statute, we're in an emergency as we speak, we don't know when we'll have another emergency, and the local control piece, it probably can fall under that too, that we've got to be able to- be able to make these decisions as it relates to the health of our children, as it relates to the academics of our children. And right now, we're sitting here with a rule that's blocking us from being able to provide the best possible instruction for our kids, the ones that are out on quarantine as well as those that truly need the help right now, based on all the things that we learned by going through this pandemic. And we can't do the distance learning because of the mandate that has come down from the governor. So, personally, I think we need to be working on that one now to see how we can get that lifted before we go to the state in Tallahassee in January, because that needs to change. And I think if we could get that lifted, Mr. LaFace and Ms. Solnit and Mr. Bogus and all of you, that would help us. Parents are calling me daily about why can't their children be able to get on the computer, even though we know it's not the best way to learn, and we know we did it when we had to do it, and we need to do it now. So, I think that needs to be a big piece of what we do for next year, for any emergency, not just a pandemic. It could be a hurricane, some kind of disaster that happens here, and our hands are tied. So, it ties into local control, but this is something we need to do something about right now, and it definitely needs to be in our priorities for the coming year.
Other board members on that subject? Ms. Brill's got her finger, her thumb, her thumb, her thumb up. Mrs. Whitfield, okay, next, next issue? Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, just by way of refresher, can you, somebody remind me why we have increased veteran teacher salaries instead of increased teacher salaries?
It was just one of the items that came up. I think because in the past, the bonus money, if I'm not mistaken, bypassed veteran teachers. Is that correct? And I think that's why it came up.
So, I would propose that we just pursue avenues to increase teacher salaries. Okay, can I get an amen?
That is, yes. Mrs. Whitfield, yes?
Well, I actually wanted to point out, so I think, yes, obviously, we want to increase teacher salaries across the board, and that needs to happen, especially in these crazy times. But there was an issue last year that I think is really important, where the governor gave a very large raise to brand-new teachers, and then the compression was so huge. So, I think we should probably address that in there, that as going forward, let's allocate funds to all teachers across the board and not just to one group. I realize he brought up the bottom teacher salary, which is great, but the compression is so big now, and it really, it's disheartening for teachers to feel like they've been here for 10, 15 years and making the same as someone who's just started. So, if we could write it in there a little bit, just to say that going forward, all future raises that they may want to give should be spread to all teacher groups.
Dr. Robinson, and then Mrs. Andrews?
So, okay, so, in response to that, actually, I was wondering if it was the compression issue, but I don't think we ask them to solve that. I think we just ask for more money for teacher salaries, and then it's under local control to address our compression issues, right? So, I would still like to see it just say teacher salaries.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Maybe we could say without restrictions, because had they have given it to us, we would have done a great job with spreading it out, I think. But telling us how to spend it, I think, is the problem. So, if going forward, no restrictions on funds coming for teachers.
I agree. Mrs. Andrews?
You know, we're still suffering with mental health, and I know we're going to have the referendum, and luckily, that helped us. We don't know where we'll be with the referendum within the next year, hopefully successful, but we've got to invest in student mental health and health services. We sat here today and talked about it. You know, our children are impacted by this pandemic. They're scared. They want to do well on their academics, and they're trying their best through all of this, a lot of these adult issues that you hear, all of the concerns about. But a lot of our kids are in school now, and they're scared. They don't know what's going to happen to them, and we've got to put monies in mental health and health-related services. And we did a good job, and thanks to the taxpayers for passing the referendum so we could get ahead. Mr. Oswald, you and your group with putting a behavior, mental health specialist in every school, but I know the school psychologists are overloaded. Everybody's overloaded right now because we have so many problems. And I don't think things are going to change anytime soon, and we know with this pandemic, it's going to take us two to three years to bring our children back academically as well as socially and emotionally. So, that's mine.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And then, when we move to Slide 12, the appropriations request, so I'm fully supportive of continuing the grants for West Tech apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs. I would ask that we add North Tech and Riviera Beach Prep pre-apprenticeship programs to that, that continue to look for funding for list. And then, do I pause on that? Yes?
I want to be clear this year that, you know, I will be having the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable meeting soon, and I know last year, we had difficulty, Dr. Robinson, with these appropriations because the district said we didn't make the timeline. So, I really want to make sure when we put it on the list and say that this is something, we do need this for the children as well as the adults in our communities. So, we need to have some directions from you as to how you want us to make sure that we meet the deadline based on the administration that we're talking to right now.
Dr. Robinson?
Okay, and I think this is my last one. And so, the bullet on seeking funding for Historic Roosevelt. So, I just wanted to provide a little bit more context for that. So, you probably recall that for, not this last year, but the two prior years, thanks to the work of Senator Powell and then Representative Jack Kent, there was an allocation from the state to work on planning the Black History Museum that we hope will, will be created at the Historic Roosevelt site. What I wanted to share with you is because there's a lot of growing community interest and support for this larger project, only part of it would come out of any district funds. And again, thanks to the voters for, for the dollars allocated for Historic Roosevelt. And the dollars coming through the school district directly from those funds would include the facility for the high-end academic programming that the community has asked for for more than a decade, as well as the restoration of the gym as a multipurpose cultural arts building. The other, and I just want to share with you the other kind of working agreements with the community at large. This is what I would call the wish list for what happens on that campus, not that it would come from, all this would not come from district funds, but hopefully, the district's voice would be added to advocate for these partnerships to make this happen. So, one, the community was clear they want to preserve the name of Roosevelt. They wanted to maintain the frontage, face, and tamra. As I mentioned, the high-end academic program and preserving the gym as a multipurpose cultural arts building. Further conversations have developed. There's conversation about a clinic to be operated by the healthcare district possibly going on that site, a community access media center, which is part of the original wish list, the Black History Museum as discussed, a research library. We're now also talking about possibly a healthy food co-op kitchen and eating space as well as office space. And again, I just want to make it clear that the, all that big wish list is not district funding. It's not proposed to be done with district funding, just the academic building and preserving and repurposing the gym, and then, of course, preserving the name and all. But all these other things, the health clinic, research library, all that, that's, we're working on community partnerships and access and philanthropy to make that happen, but it is on, on our campus. And I would hope that we would support as, as these plans develop, when, when the school district's voice needs to be added to the advocacy, that we will be willing to do so. But I just want to make it crystal clear, I am not trying to advocate for district operating funds to do all these 11 things on the happy wish list. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
I definitely want there to be an appropriation request for the J-1 visas. We have our dual-language programs, and we have a lot of work to do with them. I mean, when we think about our school district of Palm Beach County, when the largest minority is Hispanic right now, the programs that we have can be just increased tremendously twofold if we can get the right teachers in here to do this work. And so, I definitely, I know Ms. Solnit has said she was going to work to have this reinstated. A lot of this ties into the feds too, the federal government, based on the last administration. We had a little hole there, but now that we have the Biden administration, it seems like we should be able to get things moving. And certainly to Dr. Lacava, when we have groups that can actually bring these, these teachers here so that we can move these programs, I just don't want us to sit on that because I'm sitting with a dual-language elementary school out in District 6, and I don't really have a transition for the middle school or the high school, because a lot of that has to do with not having the teachers and not really being ready. So, we'll have to think out the box, and we have in Palm Beach County in the past. We had an effective, vibrant J-1 program in Palm Beach County back in the day. So, it can happen again. It needs to happen again, and it's necessary.
Anyone else? I think that's it, Mrs. Solnit.
Okay, well, we'll be back on October 6th for the next workshop. I'd like to thank Ms. Solnit, Mr. Bogus, Mr. LaFace, and Ms. Fay for pulling that together, and the board for their feedback and suggestions and priorities, so we'll continue to work on this and bring it back to you in October.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Burge. Thank you, Mr. Barbieri.
Thank you. Bye.
So, now, we'd like to transition to your policy workshop. We have a full slate of policies. We have five that are related to our COVID protocols. These are the permanent policies. And then, we have also our People Progression Plan policy. As the team's assembling, I would like to read into the record, we were, we got an overwhelming support from our pediatricians, and they've, they've crafted a letter that they've all endorsed. My count was 85 that signed, but I've told it may be over 100. But I'd like to read what the pediatricians have stated here in Palm Beach County. So, and this is verbatim. So, "As your community pediatricians and pediatric nurse practitioners, we fully support the Palm Beach County School Board and school districts mandating universal masking of children and adolescents in our schools. We are seeing alarming number of children in our offices with COVID-19. We are overwhelmed, frustrated, and exhausted by the demand the surge of pediatric and adult cases is putting on each of us and our colleagues. With limited staffing and supply of necessary resources to meet the community's needs, we are concerned that children who are ill or injured from non-COVID causes will not have an available local pediatric ICU bed if needed. We strongly believe that mask mandates are necessary until the positivity rate decreases in our county, since even those vaccinated are at risk to spread the illness. We also strongly believe that increased vaccination of teachers, staff, and eligible students is needed to keep our children healthy and schools open. We encourage the Palm Beach County School Board members to continue to make decisions for our children's, children and teacher's safety based on recommendations from the medical and public health experts. We are all in this together." So, anyway, we'll make a copy available to the board, along with the presentations we received from Dr. Alonso and Dr. Andrick. All that will be shared with each board member. So, thank you. And with that, let's see, what's up first? We've got the visitors' policy, which is Chief Alexander's taking the lead on that one. So, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Board Chair, board members. Now, this should probably be the easiest of the policies that we're going to get into today. In terms of applicability and scope, it applies to all visitors, understanding again that a visitor is any person who is not an employee or student of that specific school district property. The proposed changes cover the following four areas in terms of scope. Now, this particular section primarily, you know, think in terms of contact when you look at this area. I'm not going to go through all of this language that's in front of you, but it defines and more closely defines how we're describing contact. It also makes it clear that the distance and incubation period may be revised by the superintendent based on CDC or local public health guidelines. In terms of additional district safety guidelines, we're adding the additional items here to include the runny nose and stuffy nose. And we're defining our social distance, not by particular measure, but by, as recommended by the CDC. Duration has changed to include that the superintendent will provide periodic guidance and directives aligned with recommendations, and additionally, that the directives may include mandatory protocols, including but not limited to distancing, coverings, and other protective Next steps are listed here, and that concludes my presentation.
Questions, board members?
To switch it to the next one.
I guess that, I guess you're good to go on that one, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, I believe we're moving on to the employee policy. Ms. Vicki Evans-Pere?
Hi, good afternoon. Okay. So, this is the board policy on 3.82, the employee protocols due to COVID-19. Again, the purpose of this policy is to facilitate the continuous operation of the district adhering to health and safety and welfare for our employees and our students. The changes that we've made to this basically are what the emergency modifications were that you saw a week ago, I believe it was. It just differentiates the protocols for vaccinated versus unvaccinated employees and allows the superintendent to issue guidance and directives pursuant to recommendations from public health or governmental guidance. So, this is the decision tree we have. We've now created one that's, that's, the colors are different at the request of, of some of the regional superintendents. So, the colors look a little different than the students, so it makes it stand out a little bit more. But this is basically the decision tree. So, exposure to COVID-19 possible, positive case while at work. We have now vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So, the vaccinated person continues working just as normal. They're encouraged to get a test usually around day, between day three and five, and they're required to wear a mask for at least 14 days. But right now, everybody's required to wear a mask. But should that come back, come off where people aren't wearing masks, if you are exposed and you're working, you need to wear a mask. For unvaccinated people, they will return after 14 days, because that's the incubation period for the virus pursuant to the CDC. Then, we have a group of symptomatic COVID-positive or those exhibiting symptoms at work. They're treated very, they're treated the same. They can return after they have no fever for 24 hours, and that's without the use of fever-reducing medication. They have improvement in their respiratory symptoms, and it has been 10 days since the onset of symptoms or have at least two negative tests taken at least 24 hours apart. The two negative tests have to be given by a medical professional. They can't be over the counter because there's no way of determining that that was really the employee who took that test. So, then, the third one is asymptomatic COVID-19 positive employees. They can return 10 days after they've had the positive test, or again, the two negative tests taken at least 24 hours apart. And that's it for the employee protocols.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for this decision tree. So, so, under number one, the vaccinated, continue working, encouraged to test, required to wear masks. Can we insert in there, you said it, but it's not here, encouraged to test at day three to five after exposure?
We can do that, yes, ma'am.
And then, under unvaccinated, so, I believe, because I've looked at too much stuff, I think that the CDC updated their recommendations on July 29th. And so, just check me on this, but for the unvaccinated, I think that they had 10 days without testing instead of 14. I think they changed it to 10.
Okay, I can check that.
Okay, and after day seven, if a negative test on day five or later. So, it's kind of sounds like the student thing, but just check that, yeah, because I could have easily been, I could have been mixing up sections. So, but I think that I have it right. And then- And then, the, under the symptomatic, or they return after, so, ten days since onset of symptoms or two negative tests taken at least twenty-four hours apart. So, those are the recommendations that I saw for healthcare workers, I think.
Okay.
And just knowing, it seems to be, well, we're working to remedy this situation, so, I guess I'm talking myself through this. But it hit, to this point in time, it can be difficult to get two tests done in a reasonable period of time by a medical professional, right? So, I don't know, maybe I'll just leave that alone since we're going to do the drive-through, but it also dawns on me if we actually do, if we actually purchase the rapid tests where employees could test, be witness testing? I don't know. I just ask that we consider a little flexibility there. But I'm not crystal clear on that. I just, I just know schools are closing because their employees are quarantined.
Right. So, if we had, if we had the test available at the school and they could test themselves in front of maybe their principal or their AP, then we could have that flexibility. It's just if they're testing at home.
No, I agree. I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to find room for improvement, that's all. I mean, this is great. And then, the last thing is, so, it can, it can be a rapid test as long as it's done, you know, by Walgreens or some doctor's office or somebody.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Whitfield?
So, I have a question that you might not like me asking, but I'm going to ask anyway. If an employee is asked to go home, are we expecting them to work or not?
That is going to depend entirely upon the employee, and that's in the, that's in the, in the policy itself, in the body of the policy. So, the remote work is available for those employees who can work remotely. So, if they're sent home and their job, their supervisor said, yeah, they can do the job remotely, and we've had this happen at the school site, we've had it happen here at the district offices. So, if it's, let's take up an IT here, for instance. They can easily, when they, we had a department that got sent home, they could easily work from home because of the nature of their job. We've had some teachers, we had, I think it was an ESE contact, who was able to do a lot of the paperwork and everything at home. She wasn't sick. She had just been exposed, so they allowed her to work from home. So, it's really dependent upon the job, what they're doing at that moment, and can they do those essential functions at home? And it's based upon the supervisor's discretion.
So, if they are working from home, they're not using sick leave?
Correct.
Right now, we don't have a sick leave that's handed to people with COVID anymore, right?
We do. It is still there. We have the ten days paid through the end of September, but it is up to ten days, and it goes back to April of 20. So, if you've used it at any point during that time, that leave's no longer available. CTA and ASOP have in their contracts, they have a leave while quarantined provision in their contracts that permit employees, if they are quarantined by a lawful medical or legal authority, which we have deemed to be the Department of Health or their own private physician, and it's for them, not for their child or the pediatrician. We've had that with the pediatrician sending a note, well, the child has positive, so the parent has to stay home. We're not accepting that. It has to be from their own personal doctor or the Department of Health quarantining them so that, then we pay them to be at home.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Robinson?
It's, okay, I'm sorry. It's just something about the last statement that scrambled my brain. So, if we have a note that the child is positive, therefore, by definition, parent is a household contact?
If the parent is vaccinated, they would continue to come to work. If they're unvaccinated, then they would stay home. They need to get that letter from their doctor that says they need to stay home. Because what we're seeing is, it's a household member, but we don't have proof that it's a household member. It's somebody who has a different last name. They're coming in with a copy of a screenshot of a phone that shows somebody's positive and has family members must stay home. We need something more definitive because we are paying for that. So, if there's an audit, we need to be able to prove that there was a reason for us to be paying them while they were at home.
Is there another way that our employee could prove that there was a, that they were in fact a household contact?
I would have to revert to Nancy Samuel's team that reviews those documents if there's anything else that they could look at that they would deem appropriate. But right now, we're asking for them to get a note from their own physician or from the Department of Health.
Okay. So, I hear that. I understand your reason why. I'm just saying, as everybody has heard repeatedly, everybody's slammed, right? And so, I don't know how easy that's going to be for people to get a note from, would we accept a note from the pediatrician who said Johnny's positive, and I know this is his mom and his house? I'm just, just look at it. I'm not here to debate it right now.
Okay.
But just look at that, because the system is just slammed.
Mrs. Whitfield and Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I'll be really fast. I just, I really think we need to work on our telework policy. I think it needs to happen sooner than later so that we can address things like this so that, you know, if it is possible for them to work from home if they have this incident with a child, I know I've heard from people who have a sick kid, what, who wants to watch a kid who has COVID? I mean, to me, that, that's crazy. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to leave my kid home with COVID, and I don't see any of my friends stepping up to watch that child. Or family members, for that matter, who may be sick or at risk. So, I really think we have to make a decision on this telework policy as soon as possible.
The first review of the telework policy is through the CHRO's meeting, which is on Friday. So, we're going to bring that forward with the, all the directors from Human Resources to let them beat it up and find out where we need to fix it before we bring it any further than that. But this is the first step. It'll be on Friday.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. And maybe we're already doing this, but a lot of our teachers and our employees may not always want to talk to us. I would hopefully want them to talk to us first because they feel comfortable. So, as we go through this fluid process with this pandemic and this COVID, how often are we meeting with the different unions? As we, maybe a year ago, we said, this is the way it is, but people probably have talked to their union representatives, and so much has transpired since we've gone up and down with this thing. How often are we getting together just to kind of hash out, what does this look like? Is this really effective based on our conversations maybe a year ago? And how often are we kind of dialoguing together so that when you bring a policy to us, we know that we're getting the voices, not just from the district's people, but from also the union representatives?
You would need to speak to Mr. Bogus about that. As of August 19th, I'm not the Director of Labor Relations any longer. I'm the Director of Professional Standards.
Well, one thing I'd like to say through the chairman to Mr. Burke, I think that's important because people, you know, want to have a voice, and maybe they don't always want to talk to us. And I think it's really important that as we go through this, and we don't know how long this is going to last, that we, we have those conversations. It may not always be a MOU that we have to do right now, but we need to hear what other people are saying, that they feel comfortable saying maybe to someone else and maybe not to their supervisors.
Yeah. So, I'd just like to share that I am in communication with our teachers' union on working conditions related to COVID. We're going to be negotiating to try to address some of their concerns as well as things that may help the district work through that. On these matters of quarantine and all that, we've really just tried to focus on the Department of Health's recommendations and the CDC and all that, and not really open it up to a lot of debate across our, across our different unions. And I feel like that, that's kind of necessary.
I like that, Mr. Burke, but I also like to hear the voice of the people, and I'm thinking about the bus drivers and the others. Yeah, I know that we're trying to follow the CDC, and that's what is important, but it's also important that we just have that dialogue. I think that's just a humane thing to do, that we do that periodically as we work through this. We may be here next year, hopefully not, but we might be here. And so, I just really want to make sure that you continue working with the unions, talking with them, and having those conversations with our employees.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Superintendent?
Okay. Well, that'll take us to Mr. Oswald and our student protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, and good afternoon, Board members. 5.326, you're familiar with this one. It was brought to the board two weeks ago. At that time, it was under the emergency rules, so this is to update the emergency policy and move towards permanent. And just to recap, this does outline the procedures and protocols around safety as it relates to COVID for our students. In particular, this policy does outline some specifics, asking parents to screen students at home prior to sending them to school, and if they have any symptoms or signs of COVID-19, to stay home. Also outlines the hygiene practices at our schools, as well as increased sanitization and cleaning in high-traffic areas. And in particular, I do just want to highlight the superintendent's authority through this policy does allow the superintendent to provide direction to the system as it relates when there's increased cases and things that are happening on our campuses, and that is outlined also in the draft policy that was attached. In addition, and part of the big, the big reason why this was brought to the Board for Emergency Adoption was the emergency rule that came out from the Department of Education through the Florida Department of Health regarding the decision tree as it relates to students and when, and the time that they need to sit out based on exposure, positive case, et cetera. In addition, the policy does outline getting parent consent prior to any COVID-19 testing and the requirement of wearing facial coverings unless they are provided an exemption due to a 504 ADA accommodation or when eating, drinking, or outside. This is the outline of the particular decision tree. I do want to speak just to the first example because we do get a lot of questions from parents and some confusion on how it is read. If you have been exposed to a, someone in school that's a positive COVID-19 case and you're asymptomatic, you can return after four days of the date of exposure. So, just to run through an example, if a student was exposed on Monday, we count that as day zero. Tuesday through Friday would be, Friday would be day four. Testing would occur on day five or later. So, if a parent got a rapid test on day five, it's negative, the student could come back on Monday. So, sometimes there's confusion whether or not the student could actually test on Friday and return. So, it's actually, day five is that. And we'll work on, clean up that language in the policy as it, we do get a number of questions. We get a lot of questions about this, but that is one that is frequent. That concludes the presentation. If there, I'll take any questions, Mr. Burke, or Chair.
Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. So, my first comment is a request that we get, the board gets an update on what the expectation is in terms of enhanced cleaning and sanitization of classrooms in high-traffic areas. Like, what does that mean? What's the expectation, right? Okay. And then, so, going to this decision tree, I love, I love decision trees. I love them. You know, I love them. And so, and Mr. Oswald, you could just go ahead and say that I'm the one who was driving you crazy about day four, day five. So, I'm glad that you clarified that. So, it'd be on day five or later, right? With day zero being the last day of exposure. That's how I heard it. I got it right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, now, and I, I believe that this decision tree, I think I saw it in the DOH's or DOE somebody's presentation, or did I make that up? Or did we create this decision tree?
This decision tree was not created by us. It was created by the Department of Ed, with the Department of Health in conjunction and part of the emergency rule.
Okay. I would like to improve their decision tree or clarify their decision tree, just like we're going to clarify on day five or later. So, now, this one I haven't budged with yet. So, on number two, I would, I think we should separate symptomatic and COVID-19 positive, right? Because at the end of the day, if, so, if you're COVID-19 positive, you're positive and we're going to, you have to be treated, you have to be tested to come back or wait the number of days, whether you're symptomatic or not. But this is the point I want to make. If you have symptoms, if you're symptomatic with symptoms consistent with suggestive of COVID, and you get tested and you're negative, I want to know what it, what is it that you could have that we think is okay for you to come back to school? Am I making sense?
If you're symptomatic, you cannot come back. You have to be asymptomatic. So, I'm symptomatic on day two, I go get, and then I'm asymptomatic on day three, and I test negative, I could come back on day three.
So, this says, so, just tell me where I'm wrong. So, symptomatic or COVID-19 positive. Then it says symptomatic, return after. The top arrow, student receives a negative test and is asymptomatic, right? So, they could come back after, so, I'm sneezing, coughing, and all that stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. I missed it. Thank you. It just clicked in my head.
Okay.
I got it. Sorry. Okay. So, scratch all that then.
I dream about this, so I have it pretty much memorized now.
Okay. I know. I have traumatized you with this. Okay. So, the last thing that I still think, though, I'm not going to talk myself out of this one, is number three. Well, actually, to add number four, if you see in the fine print at the bottom, the double asterisk talks about if a student is fully vaccinated, then it's the same decision tree as students with prior COVID-19 infection, but you kind of have to read the fine print to know that. I would just suggest that we have a number four that says student is fully vaccinated, and then it can say, see decision tree number three, right? Just so that it's highlighted.
I think that's a good suggestion, and with the vaccine rollout for our high schools, it is an incentive, hopefully, that more parents will take advantage of.
Okay. All right. And thank you. And just scratch that little brain fart I was having there. Okay.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and Mr. Chair, probably through Mr. Chair to the General Counsel. I love number two here with the superintendent's authority, but with all of these policies, and I don't know if we're now at the point that we're still in the emergency situation, but I think I had so many questions from people to say, well, is this your policy or is this the superintendent's policy? So, down at the bottom of each one of these, the students as well as the employee, I think it needs to say something like this. The emergency modification of this policy shall remain in effect for a period of no more than ninety days from the date of the adoption. The board, in conjunction with the superintendent, may suspend, revoke, because that's what we've been doing, in conjunction with the superintendent at every one of our meetings. So, it needs to be here since this is our policy, and we want the superintendent to do this work because this is his work. But I don't want people to think that we are not here, and over these last few months, we have been working in conjunction with the recommendations from the superintendent for our policy. And as I looked at other school boards, it was sort of like that. You know, they made sure that the board was mentioned there because this is our policy. So, legal, General Counsel? Is this the time for this, or would that be when we come back to, is this the time now?
I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. I think there's some language that's already in there that talks about the superintendent providing information to the board.
No, it says down in number 11, duration. And this policy can be modified, okay? Revoked, rescinded. And it just says the superintendent. I just know that since we've been sitting here doing this for the last eighteen months, it's been a collaboration between the school board and the superintendent because this is our policy. So, as we begin to work through these policies, again, the same thing for the employees as well as the students, as well as, I think, the visitors. We need to make sure that we're listed in here because this is our policy. And I thought this is what you said you would be doing when you brought it back the next time. So, is it coming later?
This is the time for that, and so, I think there's some proposed language to address that. Lisa, do you have that?
Yeah. We've got, if you look at paragraph two in the policy, lines seven through 14.
Yeah, I see that. Paragraph two is wonderful. It says that he's going to do the work, elevated, communicate, disease, the community spread, the superintendent issue periodic guidance. That's wonderful. That's what he's doing right now during the outbreak of the communal, that's all absolutely fabulous. But when we get down here and people are looking at it and they're talking about, when is this going to be over? I don't want them to think that we are not going to be participating in that process.
So, what is the proposed language? Because we would have to be careful to ensure that whatever is put into the policy, and I think similar to what's already been happening, is the superintendent has brought it to the, to the board meeting and has provided the information to the board. And I think anything outside of bringing it to the board meeting and relaying that information to the board might run afoul of sunshine.
Well, I don't know. When I'm reading this, I'm reading When I'm reading this, I'm reading that, that when we get ready to make these changes that we have done, we have done right here, made a lot of changes. We're going outside and being maskless only outside so that we could breathe the air. We made those decisions with the superintendent. So I don't know what you're talking about, the sunshine. I'm just saying, in the end, for the duration, whenever we finish this, it just won't be the superintendent making this decision, it would be all of us. So why wouldn't we put that in there? So people, when they read our policies, they could say, you know, this is the board policy, and whenever, whatever we do within 90 days or between this time, the board, in conjunction with the superintendent, could suspend, revoke, rescind these. And I think we had that conversation with you.
I think we can do that. I mean, yeah, as long as he brings it back to the board meeting as he has been do, I mean, that's effectively what he's been doing.
But I think people need to know that. You know, it's, he has been doing that and we have been doing that. So I don't think that's an issue, that we haven't been doing it. But people may not come to the board meeting and they may not know that, and they're only reading the documents. So that's what I'm talking about. And I just wanted to hear from my fellow board members.
So let us go back and, and put together some language that captures, captures that. Because again, I, I want to make sure that we're capturing what effectively we've been doing all along. And I think we, we, we need to make sure that we have the language to reflect that.
You can check other districts. I did. I went back to do my homework to check what other districts were doing as it related to their board policy as it related to COVID. And most of it had something about the board in the end as to finalize whether you're going to make these changes. It's not going to be unilateral. And it hasn't been unilateral here. So I'm just saying, we need to put it in here. And I don't know, are there comments from my fellow board members?
Ms. McQuinn?
He actually read my masked face. Yeah, I'm still questioning, Mrs. Andrews, where you want this, knowing that it is our board's policy. I think the important part of this to me was that we're giving the superintendent the authority to make on-demand decisions, knowing that the seven of us can't get together to do that when it's necessary between board meetings. So I'm not sure where, where you want that.
Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
We're not in an emergency right now. We have been working virtual. We can go back to that if needed. And I don't think that's, we're going to be there at this point in time. If there's a reason that we would have to go back to that and we needed that, I'm thinking that this is just a normal process as we move forward, and we're all here. And I just would want the public to know that this is our policy. Yes, we, we do just exactly what you said. The superintendent brings this to us, and we govern ourselves accordingly and vote on it to rescind, repeal, revoke. And I just would like for people, when they're reading this, I don't want them to call me and say, well, is, is this your policy? And where are you in this whole process?
General Counsel.
Then I think I misunderstood because if you are asking to build in language, to build in the time to bring it back to vote, then I think that is going to, in the, in the event of an emergency, is going to stall the time for which the superintendent can act. So I, I think if that is the intent, of course, we could, we could build in that language, but as long as the board understands that that is going to stall the time for the superintendent to be able to act. Now, if we're just putting in some language that says that, which is essentially what's been happening, is that the superintendent will bring back what his decisions are, which is what he's been doing, to the board so that he's keeping the board informed, which is what he's been doing, we can put together some language to that effect. So I guess I'm, my question to the board is, what is the pleasure of the board? Is it to put some language in there that essentially codifies what has been occurring? Or is it to build in time for the board to weigh in? Because those are two different things.
I definitely want the, excuse me, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I definitely want the board to weigh in, but I think in the end, this is our policy. And when we do make decisions, and it's going to be some big decisions as to whether we continue, whether we move forward, whether we revise, I just want to make sure people know that it is going to be by the board. It wouldn't be just something that was done without, without us being a participant.
Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So I, I think I'm in agreement with Mrs. Andrews, but let me just take a couple steps here. So we did emergency modifications, but this is not an emergency policy, correct? Okay. So now, maybe, you know, four months ago, I, I'm not, I think I would have wanted the superintendent to be more nimble in responding to situations. But right now, at least in terms of, of this pandemic, I, I'd like, shouldn't even say this out loud, it's bad enough now, right? So I, I think, at least as far as I can imagine, we have protocols and so forth in place so that I can't, I really can't imagine, I don't even want to, the need for the superintendent to act without board public blessing, right? But now, let me go the other way. So, so let's, let's hope that this pandemic just dramatically quiets down, right? And we get to the point that we start thinking about, well, when, when can we lift whichever mitigation effort that we have in place, right? The superintendent might, I don't think Mr. Burke would do this, but I'm just going to make this up and say the superintendent could decide, well, it's good enough and we're going to stop doing whatever, whichever mitigating effort, right? As a board, I want, I want in on that. I'm worried about that, right? And so I think maybe, in, in the way I'm seeing this, and this, General Counsel might say this is not appropriate language, but I, maybe, I, I think what we're, what I'm, what I'm saying is that the board would need to, at a bare minimum, ratify after the fact. I don't, even when we did, when it was decided that masks would be continued over the summer, and then it was said that they would be optional for the fall, did we vote on that? Before, I mean, it was, I remember it was announced, but did we vote on that as a board? I think-
No.
No.
There was superintendent's authority.
That was the superintendent's decision. So if I'm, if I'm, and not to read Ms. Andrews' mind, but I, I think that that's what we want, we're trying to guard against in this conversation, right? So I don't know what the language would be. I'm, I'm good if, if General Counsel would, would think about all this and figure out what the appropriate words would be. I don't want to hamstring the superintendent in case there is, like, something happens, But at the same time, I don't want a rogue agent either. So.
If I can, if I can ask the General Counsel, doesn't, don't we have a board policy that says the superintendent can waive anything if there's an emergency? If he determines there's an emergency that he can't get to the board in time to make a decision? Don't we have a policy that says that?
I don't believe it goes that far.
There's something about an emergency that the superintendent has authority to act without board approval in, in the event of an emergency.
Yeah, there's an emergency policy, but I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at it. I don't want to state that it goes that far without looking at it.
All right. I, I, I'll call you in a, in a second, Ms. McQuinn. I, I just want to make sure that we, that we make, we, we have a, some kind of flexibility so that the superintendent can act if he needs to act. Because first of all, change in policy takes weeks, weeks or months. And, and getting the board meeting scheduled, I mean, some of us may not be available to have a meeting, you know, on short notice, plus we have to have public notice of special meetings anyway. So for him to call a meeting of the board, we have to notice that and could take days before he can get us all in here. So when we're looking at this, I just want to make sure that we give the superintendent the flexibility to, as the CEO of this organization, to make a quick decision if he feels it's in the best interest of the, for the health, safety, and welfare of the students or the staff in the district. So I guess we can beat this all, to death all day today, but you guys are going to go back and bring us back something. So I think you've heard most of us, except for Mrs. McQuinn, which I'm calling on now.
If I'm hearing, Mrs. Andrews, I'm not sure that, so let me just say, I think what you're referring to are the emails that we have all received telling us that making a decision, and I'm going to say specific to masks, is our job, not the superintendent's. And that, I don't know where that falls, but I know that when Mr. Burke, he called each of us, but it's his decision because, again, there are seven of us, and seven of us can independently make a decision about masks. So I think there at some point can be some clarification from our chair publicly about what is our responsibility and what is the superintendent's, just to clarify it. Because a, a lot of the public does think, well, board, you make that decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'd rather the General Counsel, Consul makes that clarification. Go ahead, General Counsel.
And if I may add, Mrs. Andrews, because I'm aware of your concern, what we did do was we went and looked at some other policies to try to create some language to, to, for, for the, to bring to you all today to take a look at. And so the language that you see here is a combination of looking at other policies and seeing what other districts are doing. We have not seen in other policies where they've gone that far. That's not, that's not to say that, you know, if it's, if it's certainly the board's pleasure to, to do that, we can, we can look at how we can massage some language to do that, but we had not seen that. And so we had looked at different districts and had added, what you see here, some language from what we, we had gathered from other districts. And I think most other districts that we had looked at had similar language to us, which gave their superintendent the authority under, obviously, an emergency to modify, suspend. And so that language is very similar to other districts, and we, that, that was already there. But then the additional language that you see in here, we added so that it would, it would, it would track what, what is occurring across several districts in terms of the authority given to their, or delegated to their superintendent during an emergency.
Mrs. Andrews.
We're only talking about a few lines. I will go back. I did my own homework too. And I, and I would like to work with the General Counsel to identify some of the districts and the wordings that they used, you know? I love the piece that you put in, that he's going to be doing the work and making the recommendations. But I think when the public, the, the public is looking at this, I think they are looking to see, well, what role are we playing? So there should be some, somewhere in there that talks about the role of the board right now in, in this process. I think when we're in a real emergency, if it's a hurricane or a national disaster, I understand that. But right now, as we work through some of these real serious issues as we move forward, there needs to be something, sort of blanket, that makes sure that the board is, is in there. We know that we're in the conversation because we've been in the conversation, but we need to write it as such. So I'm, I'm willing to, to go back and look and, and help the General Counsel find some districts that have some, some nice, smooth language.
Superintendent? Yeah, I'd just like to say, I, I don't have an issue with that intent. I think the, the way I understood it was, you know, it takes time for the board to change policy, you know, it could, at least probably two months. So we needed some flexibility to act quickly, and that's, that's why the afford, I think the superintendent was afforded that. If there's a way to write a policy that allows the board to, to amend and modify on the fly quickly, I'm just not sure what that language looks like. And this language seems to speak to more of me rescinding or pulling back measures. You know, I'll commit to the board that I would not make major decisions in isolation. But anyway, we'll, let's, we'll work with the General Counsel's office to see if there's a creative way to try to address your concerns. And I welcome everyone's input on these big decisions and-
And I want to say to Mr. Burke, through the chair, that I know you wouldn't do it. You are absolutely fabulous in keeping us informed. It was more about what others, as they look at our policy, they were asking the question, especially as we've gone through the pandemic, this is your policy, where are you in here in the decision-making process? And I did see some districts that had it kind of done quickly, still gave the superintendent the autonomy, but it kind of had the wording that the board was involved in it. So I'll look for that. Thank you. And Mr. Burke, we do appreciate all of your communications.
Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. I just want to bring up another concern separate in here. And I've talked to Mr. Bogus about this a little bit. I don't know if he's still on, and maybe he can address this as well. But I think we're asking for so many, so much testing to happen, for the students to come back to school, and we need to continue to make tests more available. So I know there's a lot of work that's being done by creating that site in, you know, the Chuck Shaw Educational Center, Technical Educational Center, one out in the Glades, to help with the testing. But I would love it if we could consider having the ability for families to use our nurses. So when they come back or want to come back, have the ability to come back, there could be a test done on-site. I know this could create even more work for them, and I, I have brought this up a lot, that I worry about that. But I think as we push forward all these policies that ask for so much testing to occur, that we should make sure that we're facilitating as much of that testing as, as possible. So I'd love to hear, you know, if anybody else has any thoughts on that, or if staff has anything they can do to, to really address that concern.
I can just share that we're committed to trying to provide more testing opportunities. We're, you know, we've partnered now with the Healthcare District and Department of Health. We're, we're exploring potentially private vendors that do that type of work. We do see the need, you know, for both, I've heard from Mr. Katz and our teachers' union, the staff would like to have more opportunities to get tested if they feel like they may have been exposed. And then just with our families, trying to reduce the amount of time people spend, our kids are directed to stay home. If we can do anything to support that and get kids back to school faster, we're all in favor. We do have the federal ESER funds at our disposal that could help with that. And it's just trying to work through all the logistics and the procurement aspect as well. If I, we use federal dollars to pay for these services, I have to make sure we abide by federal purchasing requirements. So the team is working on it. We're not there yet, but it is, it's high on our list of priorities.
All right. No other questions on this one? Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. So I believe that completes the COVID protocols, policies. I'm going to invite up, I believe, Ms. Diana Fetterman to join us. We've got some student-related policies, pupil progression, student discipline, I believe. So, and also, I'm sorry, of course, Dr. Sheffield. We don't do anything with student policies without Dr. Sheffield.
Get her back.
Thank you. Sorry. I tripped over the introduction there, but-
It's okay, Mr. Burke. Good afternoon, board members and, thank you. Good afternoon, board members and Mr. Burke. Today's workshop, of course, is going to be to provide an overview of the district's pupil progression plan per, you know, our Florida statute that we have to do each year in Policy 8.01. And today, what we're going to be, we're going to be talking about the required and updated languages that has taken place. We're not looking at the entire policy in itself. So at this time, Mrs. Fetterman, I'm our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, is just going to provide us with an overview of the required and the recommended changes for each level of our elementary, middle, and high schools. And Ms. Fetterman and myself, we have spent some time with all three levels in talking with principals, of course, with the feedback from the committee that works together with the pupil progression team members. So Ms. Fetterman, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Good evening. We are bringing you today's workshop to talk about the major category changes that we have for our pupil progression plan for this upcoming year. So during our next one in the development, we'll bring forward the full plan so you can see the details of all the changes. So as you note, the changes that we bring forward to you- that into the plan. Of course, this school year, we have started with the implementation of our new best standards for K-2 reading courses. We're very excited. As you've been in schools, you have certainly seen that new reading piece in our K-2 English classrooms. We are very excited about that part. We will make sure our new plan includes all of those updates and those new standards. So that will be a lot of the work for the elementary section of the plan. For our middle school, we will again update the new language to ensure that it aligns with our CERP plan. And then we will look at a few changes that we are bringing forward for district practice. Last year, when a lot of our students were in distance learning, we added some additional options for them to recover grades if necessary. One of those was a digital packet. It just provided an additional opportunity for our students if they needed to recover a course grade. But it was something that we had added in as an emergency with COVID, as COVID-related under student progression. So now we are proposing to include it as part of our regular student progression plan, just to provide students with additional opportunities to recover grades if necessary. So it is one of the proposals that we are putting forth. We are also looking at, as requested, calculation of grades and just looking at middle school attendance policies as part of our normal review. For our high school, we are also updating our language for the CERP, looking at a lot of our reading pieces, making sure we are aligning all of the course requirements that we stand, we use for our own courses here within the district, and making sure if students take any district or any courses with non-district providers, all course sequencing aligned and all requirements aligned. The inclusion of home education students that are in the JROTC that comes along with new statute language. And then also reviewing all of our high school attendance policies as we are doing with our middle school attendance policies. And then we have our next step. So we will be back to you again shortly with development, and at that time, we'll have the detailed language of the progression plan for you to review. And then we will come back for adoption in early November, which brings us at the conclusion of the 90-day emergency progression plan that we came to you a few weeks ago. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you, Ms. Brel. I was just looking at that reevaluate the existing rule requiring students with a passing course grade. So are you looking to get rid of that? Is that the plan? Is that the reevaluation or no?
We are having discussions with the middle school principal, with middle school principals, with committee members. We're just having conversations.
Yeah, it feels like that's a really good thing to look at with COVID attendance right now. So thank you for looking at that.
Ms. McQuinn.
That was exactly the one, thank you, that Ms. Whitfield brought up that I was looking at, and I want to make sure I understand it. So reevaluate existing rule requiring students to pass an additional assessment. So we're saying that rather than the additional assessment, it would be a passing course grade?
Correct.
I like that a lot.
Those are conversations that are ongoing.
All right, go ahead, continue.
Okay, that's, that is it?
That's it?
That's it, Chairman.
No other questions, board members? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent.
I just want to thank the team. We did spend time with all three levels, elementary, middle, and high, as part of their division meetings, and Dr. Sheffield, Ms. Fetterman took them all through the policies, and we got their input, so I feel good about bringing this forward. Got one more policy here. Welcome, Ms. Diane Wyatt and Mr. Oswald. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. And also with us is Mr. William Dergan. So it's his first board workshop, so go easy on him, please. But he's definitely an expert in this field. So this is required by law to go through this policy annually, and there's been some changes in House Bill 590 as it relates to the Student Code of Conduct, 5.182 and 5.183, in particular to the CESSAR codes, so the School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting. This is how we relay the data and what happens on our school campuses, up to the Department of Education, as well as our local discipline codes. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Dergan first, who will go through for you the particular changes in these codes.
Thank you, sir. So with CESSAR, what we have is we have 26 incidents that are defined by the state that are reported. We're only going to cover six of them today, because those are the only six that are going to incur any changes, and thankfully, none of them are that major. They're all more clarification items, more so than dramatic changes like we saw last year. Before I get into the actual incidents, it's important to understand that with each of those 26 CESSAR incidents, there are nine related elements, and that's going to play a quite a large, quite a large role in these definitions. So just so you know, with every incident, we look to see, is there alcohol-related? Is it bullying-related? Drug? Gang? Hate crime? Hazing? Injury? Vaping? Or weapon-related? So the first one we come into is alcohol. The definition of alcohol hasn't changed. What has changed is the related elements. What we want to do is be more specific, and even though most folks recognize alcohol as a drug, the drug that CESSAR is talking about is marijuana, heroin, you know, narcotics, not the drugs as far as alcohol and tobacco. So for all 67 counties to be in accordance with everybody, if you have alcohol on your campus, you're going to label it as alcohol-related, but not drug-related. So it's more of a technicality on that point. The same applies for tobacco. Again, nobody is debating that tobacco is not a stimulant, it's a drug, but as far as CESSAR is concerned, they want to differentiate that from heroin, opioids, hashish, marijuana, things of that nature. So again, if you're caught with tobacco, tobacco stays the same. We just want to make sure on the more in-depth layer of reporting, we don't say it's a drug-related incident, because then the state is going to be looking for drugs along with the tobacco. Aggravated battery, very simple change. The way the state looks at injuries, you either have no injury, a less injury, or a more injury. Sounds kind of weird when you say it out loud, but that's how they define it. So for aggravated battery to occur, you have to have a more injury. So again, that is some type of, you know, major incident that involves some kind of hospitalization, stitches, things beyond just a normal punch to the face. So they wanted to have that more serious, just to align everything with those related categories. Threat intimidation, this is one that we actually asked for right in the beginning of the school year of last year, and that was the removal of brandishing a weapon. The way CESSAR works, it works on what they call a rank level. So if I were to have a duffel bag with Camel cigarettes, Jack Daniels whiskey, and a gun, the gun is going to be the most serious. That's what is reported. We're not reporting the alcohol. We're not reporting the tobacco on that sense, so it's the highest level. Brandishing a firearm is weapon possession. Weapon possession is more serious than a threat. So if this example were to have occurred, you should have never labeled it as a threat intimidation. It should have been weapon possession. State recognized that, made that corresponding change to remove brandishing a firearm from the threat intimidation definition. Lastly, or second to last is weapon possession. If you guys remember, two years ago, we all had jokes about what a dirk and a slung shot and all of those weapons that were defined by Florida statute. Instead of articulating all of those, the state said, hey, refer to Section 790.001, and it will have all of the defined legal weapons, including firearms and everything else. Lastly is other major incidents. An other major incident is something that occurs that was not explicitly defined by the other 25 CESSAR incidents. It's almost a catch-all. What they wanted to specify was the instances where you have a principal who reports to campus and finds a bag of marijuana, finds a bag with a gun in it, finds a, you know, brick of heroin, whatever it may be. There's no possession. So you can't have weapon possession or drug possession if there's no possession of that item. So if a principal or anybody on campus discovers items such as that, they will put it as a other major incident, but on those related categories, that's where you'd have the weapon possession if it was a gun. You would have the alcohol possession. You would have drug possession. Any of those things that would apply, that is where it allows you for the clarification. Those are the six CESSAR definitions that encourage changes. Thank you for your time.
Nice job, Mr. Dergan. First time out, you nailed it. Good job.
Yes, he's making it a tough act to follow. I have a few other items to list that are changes that are to our code of conduct. The first one deals with our CESSAR reporting for school personnel. We've always had to report on school personnel, but the state has taken a deeper dive into that reporting. The first deeper dive was to define what personnel means. So they now are saying personnel is not only those that are employed by us, but also the ones that are on campus as volunteering or that are contracted or vendors for us. And they are looking at very specific, in-depth reporting on those with sexual assault or sexual battery. So when we look at that sexual assault, sexual battery, they not only want the substantiated, but they also want to ensure that we report the unsubstantiated as well. With the unsubstantiated, the first thing they want to know is who's responsible. So the responsibility of it, they look at whether or not it was, they were responsible for it, whether or not they were not responsible, or we're still pending that final outcome for it. So if we are still pending that outcome, they will then look for the results to be listed as pending in survey five. There is something to know about the survey reporting. Previously, we reported our CESSAR discipline data during our survey periods. Starting this year, and our first date would be September the 10th, I believe, we are now having to report our discipline data every month. So each school will have a person that will be reviewing their discipline data, and they will have to submit that they have reviewed that data, and the state will have that data every single month for the year. So now state data and data available to the public will be available each month for the previous month. When they are looking at that data for the sexual assault, sexual battery, they are looking for what we have done to, with the employee, the vendor, that person that falls under the personnel. So whether or not prior action taken was under duty reassignment, resignations, retirement, whether or not there's no action taken, or anything other. Now, in order to ensure that that reporting is done accurately, we are working with both school police and with HR for that reporting to ensure that we're capturing all of the employees or anyone under personnel category that would fall into that area. Next piece is the criminal youth diversion. That is something in which the state is asking that we recommend to law enforcement that a student that commits a crime, criminal offense, that they're able to participate in the civil citation or pre-arrest diversion program. We're also, they're also asking that we look at those with petty act of misconduct, be looked at with a different offense. Now, knowing that we're, this statute is asking that criminal DJJ looks into this, we have begun conversations with DJJ, and we'll be back before their advisory board on the 9th in order to talk to them about this change. So once you get our manuals in the development stage of this process, you will see updates to the conversation with DJJ on how that can be incorporated. Last piece that I have to share with you is our local codes. Last year, during the year when we went to virtual, we added in virtual suspension days for that distance learning for violations of the Student Code of Conduct during distance learning. We do not want to remove that option from our code of conduct, but what we are recommending is that we move that as an inactive status, but have the ability to put it back into our action codes if we return to a distance learning set, situation in the future. So no school would be using a virtual suspension at this time because we are not in distance learning. If the district goes to that, it would then be reactivated as an action code for principals to use if needed.
And that concludes the presentation, and we'll be back for development September 22nd.
Mrs. McQuinn, sorry.
Are we allowed to ask a question at this point?
Certainly.
Thank you. On page seven, weapons possession, and we know when it, when it says as defined by statute or district code of conduct. So in our district code of conduct, just tell me, we've defined those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We have both of those components covered.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you all. Thank you very much. Superintendent.
Thank you. That concludes our workshops.
Motion to adjourn the workshop? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries 7-0. Any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, Superintendent comments?
Yes, I had a lot of comments, but I'm going to shorten it way down, because we've covered most of it earlier. We talked about the work we're doing for the surprise vaccination opportunities for our students and the testing. The one thing I did want to still mention is, yesterday, we had a nice event at all six of our bus transportation locations across the district to recognize our drivers who are doing a yeoman's job in very difficult circumstances. So thanks again to the, the Education Foundation, Mr. James Gavirlos, and also Matthews Buses of Florida. They sponsored a breakfast for all of our drivers. They were Grab and Go meals from 2Js, and we had a chance, I know some of our board members were able to make it out there, Ms. Andrews, Ms. Ayala, and if I've left anyone out, I apologize, but the drivers, I think, were happy to see that acknowledgement of their efforts, and we're, we're not done there. We're going to continue to look for opportunities, maybe to, to make that job a little more attractive and help with our recruitment effort. So be working with SEIU on that soon. The only other thing I just wanted to point out is to remind folks that we've got a couple holidays coming up. Monday is Labor Day, so the district will be closed, and then Tuesday is Rosh Hashanah, so we'd like to wish a Happy New Year to our Jewish families, and I'm looking forward to the long weekend, as I'm sure, as our student, staff, and school board. So with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Superintendent, Mrs. McQuinn.
Just very quickly, I was reading the letter that came to us from Mr. Gavirlos. You know I know how to do that. Recapping some of their activities, one, the, this breakfast for transportation department, but the partnering with Simply Health for the thermometers to the Glades. I thought that was awesome, and for the public to understand that that is so parents can take their children's temperatures at home before they come to school. So I thought that was great.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn, Ms. Ayala? None? Mrs. Whitfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, thank you, and I'd like to congratulate the Education Foundation. You're just so awesome. On Friday night, you were out at Royal Palm Beach High School where you received that big award for just being so wonderful, so outstanding for all of our teachers, our students, our schools, and our community. A big celebration. Superintendent Burke was out there, and we just cheered the Education Foundation for all that they do. And yes, So thanks again to the Education Foundation, Mr. James Gavrelos, and also Matthews Buses of Florida. They sponsored a breakfast for all of our drivers. They were grab-and-go meals from 2J's. And we had a chance, I know some of our board members were able to make it out there. Ms. Andrews, Ms. Ayala, and if I've left anyone out, I apologize. But the drivers, I think, were happy to see that acknowledgement of their efforts. And we're, we're not done there. We're going to continue to look for opportunities, maybe to, to make that job a little more attractive and help with our recruitment effort. So be working with S C I U on that soon. The only other thing I just wanted to point out is to remind folks that we've got a couple of holidays coming up. Monday is Labor Day, so the district will be closed. And then Tuesday is Rosh Hashanah, so we'd like to wish a Happy New Year to our Jewish families. And I'm looking forward to the long weekend, as I'm sure as our student, staff, and school board. So with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Superintendent, Mrs. McQuinn?
Just very quickly, I was reading the letter that came to us from Mr. Gavrelos. You know, I know how to do that. Cap, recapping some of their activities, one, the, these breakfast for transportation department. But the partnering with Simply Health for the thermometers to the Glades. I thought that was awesome. And for the public to understand that that is so parents can take their children's temperatures at home before they come to school. So I thought that was great.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn, Ms. Ayala? None? Mrs. Woodfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to congratulate the Education Foundation. You're just so awesome. On Friday night, you were out at Royal Palm Beach High School where you received that big award for just being so wonderful, so outstanding for all of our teachers, our students, our schools, and our community. A big celebration. Superintendent Burke was out there, and we just cheered the Education Foundation for all that they do. And yes, Ms. McQuinn, the breakfast yesterday, Ms. Ayala, you saw it with all those wonderful bags from 2J's. It was truly great. Our bus drivers are essential workers, and not just the bus drivers. It's the bus attendants, it's the maintenance group, it's the administration, the coordinators. They are our essential workers. They make the difference in transporting all these children across the district. Many of them get up at 3 o'clock in the morning, driving from the Glades. Ms. Paul, you know what I'm talking about, coming over to Royal Palm to be ready to move that bus at 5:30. And just to be out there with them yesterday was fabulous. And the Education Foundation, you're just a part of making things happen. And the thermometers, Ms. McQuinn, that's a big deal. Simply Health has provided a thermometer for each child that lives in the Glades. And what they want to do is bring this whole project to the East and begin to get thermometers to every child because we want our kids to be healthy and safe. And if they can take their temperatures before they go to school each day, they'll know just how well they're doing. So I want to thank the Ed Foundation and Simply Health for all the great things you're doing. And we're going to be on that caravan on Friday delivering those thermometers, 10,000 to all of the children in the Glades region. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson? Ms. Burrell?
Thank you. So I'm going to also save most of my comments for next week. I just want to say that, thank Mr. Burke for recognizing the holiday on Tuesday. Some of us are, we're going to be having a long weekend, but we're going to be doing a lot of cooking. So for those who are celebrating the New Year, shanat tova. And just hope everybody has a happy and healthy.
Thank you. Officer Wells, are you over there? Officer Wells, stand up, please. Today is Officer Wells' 50th birthday, and he came to work anyway, so thank you, Officer Wells. Happy birthday.
That's hard to believe.
I want to take this opportunity to thank several groups. First of all, the principals. I know the principal's been going through a whole lot with respect to the contact tracing. I also saw the letter of apology from the Health Department that went to every single one of our principals apologizing for the backlog and the, and the extraordinary burden it put on our principals. So I want to thank our principals. I know you have got everything thrown at you at once, and you've handled everything very well. And the board appreciates your hard work. And again, I want to remind folks out there, there don't seem to be too many of them anymore, but please don't take out your anger on the principals and the teachers for following board policy. They are required to do that under the superintendent's leadership. They have no choice but to abide by the policies that this board puts in place. Also want to thank I T staff. I understand you worked about 24 hours, straight 24 hours, to try and get the camera and the audio, other audiovisual equipment set up for today's meeting. And I appreciate the hard work, and I know you worked till late hours. And finally, I want to thank Chief Alexander and, and school police for helping us maintain order at these meetings. I know sometimes you are placed in a difficult situation. And certainly, the board appreciates the fact that you help us get these meetings done efficiently and with the proper decorum to make sure we can, we can get through our, our school board business. And with that, we'll move to the first, we have, we have agenda item speakers, so let's move to those first. I have seven agenda item speakers. I'll call you, I'll call all seven names because I think many of you, many of them are, have left. So whoever's still here, please come to the podium. First, our CTA president, Mr. Katz. Then Greg Labad, Ashley Labad, Damian Labad, Kira Labad, Angelique Contreras, and Jennifer Showalter. Go ahead, Mr. Katz.
Thank you. My name is Justin Katz. I'm the president of the Palm Beach County Classroom Teachers Association. I'm starting to speak on two things, but the first one is the good cause item that was added to the agenda relative to the testing sites. I want to applaud anybody who was involved in that, the superintendent, chief of staff. It is critical that these teachers have immediate access, your employees in general, I think, as well as the students, have immediate access to testing so that they can return to work if the protocols dictate that. The reason I think it's coming forward is because students are being asked to stay out unnecessarily sometimes while they're waiting to get a test and then waiting to get a test result. Same thing for your employees. So it's extremely important. One tangent to this that I want to stress and request of the superintendent and staff is for, it was mentioned earlier, that CTA is one of the two bargaining units that does have paid quarantine leave. There is some confusion at the school sites as to how to log paid quarantine leave so that it does not deduct sick days from eligible employees who have that quarantine leave. There was a process last year, the form for, you know, filing for a sick day changed over the summer. There's a different software platform that doesn't allow you to enter in a very specific option, at least as it's been described to me. And there are instances now where some of that confusion is leading to on a school-by-school basis. I see emails almost every day where teachers say they, you know, they were told to quarantine, whether it's by their doctor, by the Department of Health. They were told to go home by their principal as a result of an exposure, at which point they would be allowed to invoke this quarantine leave. But some of the confidential secretaries and principals are unclear of the process. So I'm hoping that a simple walkthrough, a how-to, if you are exposed or you have a note from a medical professional based on the provision or contract, there is a simple way to do it. I know that a bulletin had been issued earlier this year, but, but that bulletin simply explained that that is an option. It did not explain how to exercise that option. And I worry because I get these emails that sick days are being deducted by people who are not supposed to have them deducted. And I do believe in most cases, they're being credited back to them. But it would be better not to deduct and then credit back sick days and just be able to log the paid sick day as is from the get-go. So there's not that need to follow up and monitor if you lost time when you shouldn't. So again, thank you for this, this plan. It, it's going to make sure that your teachers, who are, who are already depleted by the lack of subs having to cover classes, are not then taken out further from the classroom and then leaning on more teachers to cover for the lack of those teachers on quarantine. So thank you very much for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Ms. Showalter?
Good evening. I'm Jen Showalter, here on several policies, including C S O 1 and F M P F 1. But like I said earlier, I mean, they're all boiled down to one reason why I'm here. I'm here again because you refuse to listen to the parents, parents like me. You're listening to one-sided experts who refuse to acknowledge OpenVerus.com, the creator of the PCR test in the French study that conclude that, that COVID tests are unreliable because they can't differentiate between the flu and SARS. And they are also have up to a 97% false positive rate. Also, you had experts talking about overloaded hospitals. Well, they've also been firing everybody from firefighters to nurses because they refuse to be vaccinated. So last year's heroes are considered today's villains by the hospitals. So maybe that's why they're, they're overloaded, they're understaffed. So the board's refusing to pay attention to what we say because it doesn't reflect what you want to hear. We parents want to be heard. You go further expecting the citizens to pay your legal representation for you because of the decisions you made that do not reflect the parent's will. That's why I'm running for school board. I'm a mom first. I have three children, two of which are special needs, two of which were denied their medical exemptions even last year. This is not a workable system, and I'm one of here asking you to please listen to us, work with us, and to create option. I'm standing up here not only for my three kids, but for every kid in the system and every kid that's going to be in the system. They have a right to their own body and a right to make their own decisions for that body. If you want to wear a mask, you should be able to wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, you should be able not to wear a mask. That's the law. E O and H B 241 aside, you know, that's in the lawsuit. You have, let's see, Department of Health Notice of Emergency Rule 64 D E R 2112, which states that schools should encourage routine cleaning. Students should be encouraged to wash hands. Students should be staying home if they're sick. But students must be allowed to opt out. Section 6, D O H, says students shall not be subject to any harassment or discriminatory treatment, included but not limited to relegation to certain physical locations, isolation during school activities, exclusion from any school-sponsored events or activities. There's more. But the bottom line is, is that the Health Department contains language that prohibits harassment and demands choice. I'm here for all the children and their rights. We ask you to respect that and reverse.
Thank you, Ms. Showalter. Board members, we are now at the point where we will pull anything from consent that you'd like to pull. Any? We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Superintendent, COS 1, our new business.
COS 1. I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding with the Florida Department of Health that will outline and memorialize the obligations and responsibilities of the parties with respect to staging areas for drive-through COVID-19 testing sites.
Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Woodfield. Any discussion? Vice Chairwoman Burrell?
Thank you. I just want to thank the superintendent for, for having the M O U updated so that it's very clear that the M O U includes the, the employees' families as well. So thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
We need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ms. Ayala, second by Dr. Robinson. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.